Okay, we'll begin with non-agenda item, public testimony. I'd like to call up Camp Tongriwong, Valia Ketavong, Wendy Peña, David Bergeren, and Katie Anderson.
Good evening, my name is Camp Tongriwong, my address is on file. First of all, congratulations to Mr. Beiser and Mr. Barnett on your elections to the Board. I'm sure you're getting more than what you're bargaining for. Honorable Board Members, I'm deeply concerned about your proposed cuts to the counseling program. I understand that you have a tough decision to make. However, cutting 170 counselors from your educational team would be a huge impact and also a huge mistake on the counseling program. There is no doubt in my mind that inner-city schools and less affluent communities will suffer. Their students will have limited access to the counselors when they need it most. I believe counselors are a vital part of your educational team. What do you think unruly, disruptive, mentally unstable, and violent students end up in school? They end up in the counselor's office first before they go home to their parents. Teachers just don't have the time or the energy to deal with the problem children. In today's environment, counselors are doing so much more. They take on the roles of surrogate parents, social workers, psychologists, family planners, peacemakers, drug and gang specialists, and many others. They are also your first-line defense against absenteeism, bullying, conflicts between students. If you think you have a problem with absenteeism and bullying in your school right now, just imagine how much worse it will get when these 170 counselors are gone. These counselors are also your best insurance policy against an incident similar to the horrors that we have seen in Columbine, Santana High, and Granite Hill. I believe it is because of your strong counseling programs that there have been no incidents of that magnitude involving students in San Diego Unified School Districts. As a testament to their success in that counseling program, your district recently received the $1 million grant from the California Department of Mental Health. So, I ask that you reconsider your proposed budget and avoid the drastic cuts to the counseling program. It will greatly benefit the school, the students, and the community. The important work of these counselors will continue to ensure a safe and successful educational experience for the students and their parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Valia Ketavong and my address is on file. I am a school counselor at Hamilton Elementary School in Webster right now. Previously, I worked at Mann Middle School for six years. Many counselors, parents, students, community members, and principals have spoken previous night and just before me, have spoken about the effectiveness of the program and have shown the data how effective the program is. And my former teams at Mann Middle School also have implemented various programs that the previous counselor had mentioned, and I can attest to that because I was there for four years, I am in six years, and it has improved tremendously at Mann Middle School. Tonight, I would like to share a story of one student that I know personally who benefited from the counseling program. And she used to live in a war-torn country in Asia. When she saw the bomb raining down in her village and the fire in Gulfport Town, she hid in the trenches and eventually became a refugee and then eventually her family came to the United States. When she started the school, she did not know a word of English. It was very difficult for her to learn because of the war nightmares kept returning nightly. Her family response to the situation was, "Well, it happened a long time ago. That's nonsense. You are in the United States now. Deal with it. Focus on your education." On her first day of school, she was so disoriented that she went into the boys' bathroom. Just imagine for these teenagers standing surrounded by the boys in their bathroom. For that few seconds, seems like the time just stood still. Just look at the faces, the laugh, the scream, the taunting when those boys saw her, and her world just crumbled out on her. Luckily, with the help of the school counselor, the girl was able to face the next day and many, many more days after that. It was there, in that counselor's office, that she gained the courage, the confidence, the hope, and determination to do her best. Her family moved several times that year from Laos and then to the refugee camp and then to Dallas, and then to San Antonio, and then to San Diego. Then her dad took her to enroll in the school at Gompers, and then it was wrong school. Then the counselor drove them to Madison High, and then a few days later she had chicken pox, and her dad said, "No, you have to go to school," and again, the counselor had to drive her home. So, with all the help with the counselor and of course the educational teams, she was able to overcome all the obstacles and eventually she graduated with the master degrees.
Great, thanks. Thanks very much.
My name is Wendy Peña and my address is on file. I am here today to share my story and support for our school counselors. I have five children. Three were adopted as babies with special needs. My oldest child is 18 and graduated from high school last June. He was unclear about his future plans. He received guidance from the school counselors about career choices and college options best suited for him. He received help filling out his forms and applications and even information given to him about scholarships and financial aid. He is now a happy, successful, full-time college student about to finish his first semester. I also have a sixth grader with special needs and severe emotional problems. When she gets into trouble at school, which she does quite frequently, the counselor is there to calm her down and to redirect her actions. She uses relaxation techniques to get her to return to her classroom and to finish her work. I am sure without this support, she would have been expelled. This would have caused great impact on our family as well as our work schedules. I currently have a third grader who's dealing with severe anxiety and school avoidance refusal. His attendance has been sporadic. A couple of months ago, after a loud thunderstorm at school, he refused to go to school at all. He wouldn't even get out of the car. He missed a month of school, and I tried everything to get him back. Then, I received a call from a counselor named Leah Edzen. She met with me and she came up with a plan. She worked with my son individually and she allowed him to bring his friends to the counseling center to make him feel safe and comfortable at school. He started going back to school and started for one hour a day, and then progressed to one-half-hour increments every day until he was back at school full-time. Yesterday, at an award assembly, he received this award, excellent attendance in the last few weeks. I couldn't have been happier. I couldn't have done this without the help of our counselors. Their efforts create an incredibly positive influence on many of our children. We need our counselors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is David Bergeren and my address is as well on file. I have several of my students here to speak tonight. Thank you.
All right, hello, my name is Stephen Whiting.
My name is Chris Nelson.
My name is Chris Letzey.
And my name is Joe Rubio. We are student leaders from the Holy Cows, a first robotics team from High Tech High. We consist of 16 members, okay, sorry. We consist of 16 members ranging from ninth to 12th grade. Altogether, we have 3,400 hours of community service this year and 11,000 since 2007. We support both engineering and our community. We are aware that you may know of FIRST, and we'd like to gather the support of the district for the FIRST program as it has great impact on all the students involved.
FIRST stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. It is a K through 12 robotics program where students build, test, and compete robots on a local, national, and international level. It encourages leadership and learning of life and business skills that students will carry with them into college and their careers. One of the core values of FIRST is gracious professionalism, which means competing hard but treating everyone with respect and helping others. An example of this is when we led a one-on-one workshop with rookie teams Crawford and Lincoln High on how to run a successful FIRST team. FIRST is about more than building a robot, and teams have had a profound impact on the community and the promotion of the fields of STEM.
In the 2009-2010 season, 210,000 students participated in the FIRST program and has a deep impact on all of them. Eighty-eight percent of FIRST participants attend college compared to the 57% of the normal student population, and 55% of FIRST members major in fields of science, technology, engineering, and math as compared to the 28% of the normal student population. FIRST participants are also more involved in the community, as 71% of FIRST members partake in community service compared to the 30% of the regular students. The skills and experience FIRST participants are a part of have a deep impact on the students. Personally, I have taken a lot away from the program. The people you work with and the things you have the chance to do are truly extraordinary. People come up to us when we're exhibiting and ask us if we built the robot ourselves, and it's still hard to believe that we do.
Now that you guys have learned a little bit about FIRST and its impact, I would like to invite you to come and attend the robotics competition in March. The San Diego Regional will be taking place at the San Diego Sports Arena, and there will be 60 robotics teams in attendance, 25 of which are from San Diego County. It would also be great if the school board could support and encourage the implementation of new FIRST robotics teams in schools in San Diego. It's really an incredible program, and we would like the opportunity for every student in San Diego to be able to participate in this program. Another way you could support the FIRST robotics program would be by supporting the mentors and coaches who support this program. Our teacher, David Bergeren, as well as many other corporate sponsors and professional mentors devote countless hours of their lives to this program and to ensuring that the students succeed not only in the program but also afterwards in college and beyond. Thank you very much for hearing our presentation. Would it be okay if I have some materials to pass out?
Please, just give them to Ms. Ward here.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Yeah, and maybe Superintendent, if we could follow up with the students and find out how we could encourage and support the program? Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. Great, thank you.
Hi, Katie Anderson. I'm here in my capacity as Gate DAC Chair, co-chair this year. Welcome, Mr. Barnett. Last Friday, the superintendent notes had a very disturbing piece in them, and many parents and I are really sad that you gave them this forum. Jay Matthews' opinion, and it was an opinion piece in the Washington Post which calls urban gifted programs a waste of time, was placed in the superintendent Friday notes last week. I have several problems with the placement of this article, and I'm here to ask why, by whom it was placed, and what does this mean for the district's commitment to gifted ed. With the exception of the two new members, every single person on this dais has told me that you value gifted education. Instead of recognizing the difficulty in this article and often the lack of services to this deserving and promising population, Matthews blanketly dismisses the endeavor on the basis of weak factors. These factors are not even salient to our population or our district. The tests used in the districts mentioned are not language-neutral as is the Raven Progressive matrices which we use here, and because we test universally, the socioeconomic consideration he mentions is null as well. Another factor he mentions is the students labeled non-functioning, gifted, and talented. He echoes the dismissal of these students as a lost cause because they are non-motivated and lack study skills. You gotta be kidding me. I don't even know what to say to that. Does that mean that then we waste their potential because they're non-motivated? At the beginning of the school year, gifted kids know an average of 60% of the content for their new grade. Some research suggests that 20% of dropouts are gifted students who grew cynical with school. Being smart does not make a person mature in judgment any more than age does alone. To boot, many gifted teenagers do poorly because their earlier grades were so easy that they didn't develop good work habits, and when they're finally presented with adequately challenging work, they freeze up. This is where the teacher's expertise comes in. Because Matthews' opinion about AP passing rate in the calculus class he highlighted and spoke of that was in Stand and Deliver the movie, it's based on statistically insignificant data and it is at best anecdotal. This man obviously has little knowledge of the gifted student population and their needs, and I and many other parents are deeply bothered by the fact that he was given space in Friday notes. How does this help keep families from fleeing the district? Open house season in private and parochial schools is upon us now. This was a big mistake, and I would really like you to take it back. Every year I stand before this Board asking for the Gate Department and/or program to be spared in one way or another. Usually, there's a reduction in services, but this year, the whole thing is on the table. Every year I ask, "Who put us on the menu?" There are many other programs and services that are never presented for cuts, or if they are, the percentage cut is less than Gate cuts. I'm almost done. We are always on the menu and we always give. We are an urban district. We have problems with our gifted program. Those problems would be better addressed if the district made a meaningful commitment to gifted students instead of threat after threat, year after year. Finally, I recently read that Socrates said that gifted individuals who develop without the support of their society owe that society nothing special in its hour of need. You're cutting off our collective noses. Thank you.
Okay, Ben Kelly, Lance Wren, Becky Breedlove, and Gary Rollins. Go ahead, either one of you can talk.
Good evening, Superintendent Koba and members of the Board. My name is Becky Breedlove. My address is on file. I want you two new members of the Board to know how much I appreciate having heard your discussion last week that included the possibility of a change over time in the ways the Title I funds are allocated. To those of you who know nothing of my background, I would like you to appreciate that I taught for over 20 years in this district and then took on administrative work as an avid regional coordinator for 10 years. During the last three years, I have on a daily basis volunteered at the Champs campus and am an active member in that Crawford cluster. But now to an issue that frankly has bothered the snot out of me since last September. In September, the Union Tribune published an article discussing the allocation of discretionary funds to area superintendents. At that time, I learned that the Lincoln-Morse Cluster area superintendent receives $140,000, which is twice that of the allocation to any other area superintendent in the district. Additionally, that cluster has an assistant area superintendent and twice as many parent liaisons as any other cluster. I've tried to find out why this seeming inequity exists and who was part of the decision-making process that created it, but to no avail. This is only one of many realities that can be pointed to that help me feel that some of the schools in Board Member Jackson's region are treated differently than others. As we get closer to the time when you will be making difficult decisions to cut programs and personnel, I hope you newcomers to the Board will visit schools in the Crawford complex and especially in the cluster and especially at the Crawford complex, and appreciate how much we do on what is already less than what others are giving. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ben Kelly, and I'm the president of Benchley-Weinberger Elementary School. And this is the rest of the ASB.
Hi, my name's Adam Monroe. I'm in third grade, and I'm ASB's fire marshal for Benchley-Weinberger.
Hi, my name is April Burns. I'm in fifth grade, and I am ASB's playground commissioner at Benchley-Weinberger.
Hi, I'm Taylor Fackaday, and I am in fifth grade, and I am the vice president at ASB's at Benchley-Weinberger.
So, I put together a little speech about how great the Magnet program is at Benchley-Weinberger. I have attended Benchley-Weinberger for almost six years, as did my older brother and sister before me. For all three of us, BW has been a wonderful place to grow intellectually, creatively, and socially. Unlike a neighborhood school, the Magnet program at Benchley-Weinberger has given me the opportunity to learn with kids from all parts of the city, from all types of backgrounds, races, and ethnicities. Together, we form a diverse and rich community of learners. We learn from our teachers, but most importantly, we live to learn and work with one another in a school that looks much more like the world than any one neighborhood school ever could. Without Magnet busing, many of my fellow students would no longer be able to make the trip across town to study with me. In fact, I would not be able to attend Benchley-Weinberger either. Simply, BW as we know it would no longer exist. Some of my best memories at Benchley-Weinberger were made working in the computer lab, writing and taking pictures for the Panda Press, and participating as a news anchor on our school channel, KRBW. Activities that are all supported with Magnet funding that have helped to make learning challenging and exciting for me. I know how hard it must be for you to have less money to spend. I often have to stretch my meager weekly allowance to cover the costs of the many things I want to buy. But, when money is tight...
Shouldn't we take that up with your parents?
Yeah, they know. But, when money is tight, that's when I think the hardest about the most important purchases I can make, and I would never cut the things that I value the most. BW is a school that works mainly because of its great teachers, its Magnet resources, and its diverse student body. As you make cuts, please think carefully before eliminating some of the expenses that have truly added value not only in our school but in our lives.
Thanks.
Thank you. How do you follow that, right? Anyways, my name is Lance Wren. I'm the classified employee. I'm with CSCA. I'm the vice president for custodial for San Diego Unified School District, and my address is 4105 Euclid Avenue, 92105. I want to introduce myself as a special interest, because after all, that's what I get called all the time. I mean, on the radio, I hear I'm a special interest, right? Because I'm a union leader, right? So, what are my interests? I have a 13-year-old daughter. I'm interested in her education, right? My wife works in the school district. I'm interested in protecting her job. I'm interested in protecting the jobs of the 500 custodians I represent. I'm interested in public education and protecting that. I'm interested in San Diego Unified. I've been here 32 years. Those are my special interests. People on the radio call me a special interest. They want to come on and take over the school board. And I wonder about that. Does that not make them a special interest? You know, there's a difference between us, probably, and them. They got a lot of money. So, I looked at the names on the website, and they got a lot of money and they got radio ads. I don't know, we don't have any radio ads. They want to privatize the school districts. They want to destroy public education, and that is the plan, okay? And the way they'll do it is they'll start with the charter schools. Let's get charter schools going. We'll privatize another, and we'll just keep moving in and moving in and moving in. I read a book this summer. It's called Empire of the Summer Moon. It's about a Comanche War Chief named Quanah Parker, and he had the same kind of thing going on, except for the white man was trying to take his land. And they did eventually. He assimilated into our society. He even became a school board member. This was a Comanche War Chief who killed many white people, but he eventually assimilated into society. One day, he told his neighbor. He said to him, "The white man took my land." And his neighbor, a white man, said, "How'd they do that? How could they possibly do that?" And he said, "Let's go outside." He sat him down on a log, he sat down next to him, then he stood up and he said, "Move over." He sat down next to him again. He stood up and he said, "Move over." Quanah sat down next to him again. And he did that over and over until his neighbor fell off the end of the log. And that's how he said, "The white man stole my land." And that's what's going on today with those ads and with that group. I will be here for the fight, to fight that group, and I will join you in that. But I'm going to tell you, it's going to be hard, because they have a lot more money than San Diego Unified. Thank you.
Is Gary here? No.
I'm declining.
You're declining? Okay, thanks, thanks, Gary. So, I'd like now to ask the Navy JR2C color guard from Patrick Henry High School to present the colors. Please stand.
Left, as I would. Order, colors. Left, face.
Before we begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Red, D, cut. Right, face. Port, colors. Bow, word, march.
I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the December 14th, 2010 regular meeting to order with all Board Members present. If you... Ah, with one Board Member missing, that's right.
We should mention for the record that Mr. Beiser has a terrible case of the flu, and he's actually doing some favor by not spreading his germs. But I did talk to him last night, and he did agree that I could have all of his title But I did talk to him last night and he did agree that I could have all of his Title I, any of the Title I money that's in his district I could have. So, if you're watching, Kevin, I wanted to know, I did mention that.
You guys north of Aitken, Sharon.
Yeah.
If you wish to address the Board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium and you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the Board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. We'll start with Nancy Sokis, the ASB President at Patrick Henry High School.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Sokis. I'm the ASB President at Patrick Henry High School, and I'm the President of the Council of ASB Presidents for the district. Currently at Patrick Henry, we had our first meeting of the year with staff, students, and community members to begin preparing for our WASK visit. We just had our second successful blood drive and collected 61 pints for the San Diego Blood Bank. We are currently holding our holiday toy drive until this Thursday, and we are getting ready for the January 20th Talent Show. And we are just wrapping everything up and getting ready for winter break.
All right, thanks, Nancy. And Karina?
Hi, my name is Karina Velasquez. I am the ASB President at San Diego High School. And what's currently going on is that we finished our food drive with JR2C and donated all the cans to San Diego Food Drive, Food Bank, I mean, sorry. And right now, we're having our Winter Spirit Week and just trying to promote the holiday seasons and getting everyone excited for winter break. We're also getting prepared for our adoptive family. We collaborate with the YMCA and give gifts to families in need. And we are currently preparing for our winter formal, which is February 5th, and our rally on February 4th. Thank you.
Thanks, Karina. Thanks, Nancy. Okay, at this time, because I know we've got our auditor and the Chair of our Audit Committee are time-sensitive, I'd like to move up Item H3 if we could. So, this is our annual financial statements for fiscal year 2009-10. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Barrera. And I would like to ask if we could have Kristi White and representation from our External Audit Finance Committee. I don't know if Mr. McAllister is in the audience. Yes, he is, our County Treasure Tax Collector and also the Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee.
Well, good evening and thank you very much once again for the hospitality that you always extend to us, and it's a pleasure to be here. Once again, Mr. President and members of the Board. With me tonight are Kristi White and her Associate Editor Heather Dowd, or Editor, I'm saying. Auditor. It ends with R. But in any case, we're very pleased tonight to be able to present to you the findings of the External Audit Report. And the Audit and Finance Committee was asked to review the External Audit Report conducted by Nigro, Nigro and White for fiscal year 9-10. The committee commends the district finance staff for receiving an unqualified opinion from the external auditors, which is the best opinion that a school district can receive, as well as completing the audit on time and meeting state deadlines for the sixth year in a row. Each year, the audit of this district has become easier and clearer, and I think that's a tribute to not only the cooperation that we've received from the staff, but the auditors themselves have done just a remarkably good job, I think. Between January and December 2010, our committee was provided with periodic progress reports on the external and internal audits taking place of the district. Status reports on the Internal Audit Hotline were also provided. Audit findings and recommendations from the previous year were also tracked, and implementation reports provided to the committee. Of the nine findings from 2008 and '09, five have been fully addressed and solutions implemented, and the remaining four items were carried over to the 2009-10 Audit Report. The External Audit Report for 9-10 discussed five findings. The audit findings outlined certain internal control issues and one instance of federal noncompliance finding 2010-5, personal time accounting for federal programs. Our committee continues to be concerned about the accountability of district management staff in addressing audit findings related to personal time accounting, a very narrow area, but nevertheless, it's a recurring theme each of the last few years. In most cases, the findings were a result of human error in accounting and reporting practice. However, similar errors have resulted in audit findings for several years now in a row. Although the committee commends the Payroll Department for addressing these time accounting issues, we have not seen the improvements that we had expected before. It is imperative that management staff is held accountable for these errors in order to ensure compliance and accuracy. We expect that on the next Audit Report, this will no longer be a finding, and we are hopeful that that will be the case this next year. On Thursday, December 9th, 2010, our committee unanimously agreed to recommend that your Board accept and approve the Independent Auditor's Report for 2009-10 and concurs with the recommendations contained in the audit findings. So, barring any questions, and Ms. White, would you like to make a comment? Or we're here, if you have any questions, to answer them.
Can we get a motion to approve the, we've got a motion from-
She'll move.
Second, Jackson, in a second. Any questions or comments on the 9-10 Audit? If not, please vote. Great. And, yes, please.
Just a comment. Certainly, I'd like to thank your, thank the audit team, but then I'd like to thank the Audit Committee for your time, the volunteers that serve on there, and Ms. McAllister yourself. We appreciate all the time that you put into following through on these items. And I think what we did here again, and we've heard this for a number of years, about the management staff being held accountable for certain items, so you really need to follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again, Dan. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll now move on to our student presentation. This is from the Scripps Ranch Cluster, and this is the Marshall Middle Anti-Harassment and Anti-Bullying Program. Dr. Meyer, do you want to introduce this?
I would like to introduce Assistant Area Superintendent Angela Bass, and if she could please come to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Kova, President Barrera, and the rest of the Board members. Today's a great day to, whenever we get a chance, to recognize community. I serve both Mir Mesa and Scripps Ranch community. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing many of the things that are happening in Scripps Ranch, but focusing in on one school that has been doing many dynamic things. From Dingman Elementary School to the Richard Music and Science Programs, to the program they're going to be hosting tomorrow, the musical program tomorrow, to the excellent work that's happening at Scripps High School. The Scripps Ranch community and the parents have really worked hard to make sure that every day, all children are getting a great, both academic achievement, but also a great social environment. Tonight, I'm going to introduce Michelle Irwin, who is, you know, an excellent principal along with the rest of our principals in the community. One of the things that she has really taken on is to really look to make sure the needs of the children are met in the schools. She not only is ensuring that the academic program is strong, she also is looking out to make sure that all the enrichment programs are strong as well. The other thing that I think is really amazing is that she has had the insight to be in touch with her children, to know what the issues are of the community, and to really bring programs to the community that really improve the lives of our children and make sure that they are whole and healthy. One of the things that she introduced to me, and I had the privilege of seeing, was a program on anti-bullying. And she brought this program to Marshall Middle School last year and again this year, but expanded in an amazing way. I attended the Anti-Bullying for 6th Grade program, and along with several principals from our district and several counselors from across our district, who thought that this would be a viable program that would help us address issues to make sure that all of our children feel safe, feel secure, and then have a place to go when something goes wrong. Because I think it's, one, to feel safe, but really knowing that they have a person to talk to, but also to make sure that these young children or young adults become sensitive people who recognize the need to treat each other with respect and kindness. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Principal Michelle Irwin, who's going to talk about a great program called Teen Truth.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Kova, Deputy Superintendents Meyer and Stover. As, I'm Michelle Irwin, Principal at Thurgood Marshall Middle School, and I'm accompanied today by Counselors Eileen Akers, Sharon Hoise, and two of our student representatives, Katie Owen and Joshua Ruiz. As you know, bullying in school has taken center stage. It is a topic of talk shows and is one of the biggest headlines in our newspapers and magazines across this nation. At Thurgood Marshall, we have established a proactive stance by developing an anti-harassment, anti-bullying program. Counselor Eileen Akers and our students will share information tonight about our program and how it's been implemented.
Good evening. I'm going to present our Anti-Bullying, Anti-Harassment Program to you, and the PowerPoint is going to be important to follow, if you can turn, you can see it that way, okay? So, there's different components to this program. We started out with a four-day anti-harassment unit that was created by the Marshall counselors, where we dealt with the topics of gossiping, taunting, bullying, cyberbullying, assertiveness, body language, and empowering bystanders. And we presented that during our homeroom classes over four days. Then, we had a whole faculty meeting where there was a work session and discussion to create a school-wide anti-bullying, anti-harassment policy that involved and was created by all stakeholders. At that meeting, we charted the teachers' suggestions and we asked the teachers to bring back with them the student responses to some questions that they discussed when they were going through their anti-harassment unit. And we wanted to know from the students, "How do you think bullies should be punished? What about the first offense, second offense, additional offenses?" We created an anti-bullying and anti-harassment policy based on input from students, teachers, counselors, and administrators. It included elements of many things, including research, leadership, positive peer pressure, and the consequences were sequential. They were also rehabilitative and purposeful in that there was a letter of apology to the victim, there was required research by the bully on the causes and effects of bullying. There was also a punitive component where the bully was given detention and suspension, but it was sequentially dealt. The program that was just discussed is Teen Truth Live Bully. It is a thought-provoking, intense, very intense, because it includes footage from Columbine, multimedia anti-bullying presentation. It was created by J.C. Poehl. We presented that to the students. It taught students to identify different forms of bullying, how to identify how bullying can lead to violence, and how to motivate students to stop. And our PTA paid for it, and you're going to see a small clip of Teen Truth Live Bully right now.
I think high school's such a time where you're still trying to, you know, figure yourself out so much, that that's why everyone does have such a big info function. And that's all we do, is try to fit in and try to, you know, wear the cool clothes and do this the right way and deal with the popular crowd. Thank you, Ray, I was so insecure. I wasn't accepted at all. And I don't think anyone's not guilty of doing it in time.
Unfortunately, a lot of the kids are not connected.
His supposed friends basically didn't matter with everybody.
If people are going to go around and do that to everyone, they're not going to get to know anyone. They don't have that, because they're going to reach out to other things to stay sleeping.
Walking through the courtyard at lunch, someone tripped me and spit on my face. It was one of the worst experiences of my life. I started crying. It was bad.
I didn't like everybody, you know?
I would have loved to just hit her in the face, make her feel stupid in front of everybody like she did to me.
Excellent.
I think I would examine all the person that looks on the outside like you today, you know, like it's perfect, but it's really not.
This video is part of the Teen Truth Live Bully presentation. That's about a 22-minute video, but the presenter is very, very dynamic also. And we created a passive permission letter to our parents. We bulk mailed it to the entire community, so if parents did not want their students to go through the presentation, they had to let us know they didn't want to. You can see just from the minute that you saw, it's very intense, and we didn't want kids to just go back to class and go through their day. So, the counselors created debriefing activities to help students and teachers also process the feelings and reactions they experienced during the presentation, and they incurred the debriefing, the period immediately following each grade-level presentation. We wanted to get the students' feelings about how this impacted them, and so we asked for some immediate feedback. We created, the counselors created a three-question survey, and actually, the response of our students was quite impressive. This is last year when we presented Teen Truth Live Bully to all 3 grade levels, 6th, 7th, and 8th. So, there was about 1,370 students responding to our three questions, which read, "Has Teen Truth Live Bully presentation changed your feelings regarding how serious bullying can be, how bullying can affect its victims, and your willingness to intervene as a bystander?" And 93% of our students said, "Yes, it has changed our feelings about how serious bullying is." 94%, "Yes, it has changed our feelings about how bullying can affect its victims." And 84% said, "Yes, my willingness to intervene has changed. I will try to intervene now," which is the hardest thing for middle school kids to do, probably anybody. This year, because we had done 6th, 7th, and 8th grade last year, we just presented this to the 6th grade because they were the new students. Same questions, 97% "Yes," 97% "Yes," 91% "Yes" on our three questions. So, very impactful presentation to the students. These are some comments, and I think these are very, very interesting. "It showed bullying and its effects, student comments. It showed bullying and its effects on students from their own perspective as opposed to an adult's perspective, which was easier for me to relate to as a student. I recognize some of these things in our school. I like this presentation because it really showed the other side of people's actions and how they feel, not the covered-up, try-to-be-cool version." Another comment, "After seeing the shooting at the high school, I feel as if bullying is a very serious topic that needs to be stopped. I also believe that the next time I see somebody being bullied, I won't be a bystander. I'll do my best to stop the bully. If I ever get bullied, I won't keep my emotions to myself. I would tell other people so I won't live miserably." And finally, "It was amazing, the most moving video and presentation I've ever seen. You guys really get what we're going through, even if parents don't. We don't want to watch silly cartoons about kids shoving each other. You guys showed us the truth, and that gets, that really gets to us. The Columbine video was so sickening, but when you watch it, you realize that it could happen right this second because of one stupid tease or push or shove. People don't know how bad it really is, and everybody, including me, has been bullied." We rolled out this policy to everyone, admin, counselors, teachers, parents, and this is the policy, you've got a copy of the policy. We wrote this policy, as I've gone over a number of times. Basically, summary, first offense is a warning. It's documented in Zangal, parents notified, and everybody is told what the second and third offense will, what the consequences will be. Second offense, there's a referral documented in Zangal, and then the students given a detention after school, and they have to write a letter of apology. Third offense, referral documented in Zangal, conference with parents, loss of privileges for the semester, and then this gets into the options of consequences, Option 1 and 2, bigger version of it. Option 1, and this is something, this is what we brought our students to talk to you about tonight, the Jury of Peers, which we created at Marshall. And the second option, if the parent or student does not want to go through the Jury of Peers, they will be suspended. So, we trained the jury. Counselors met with the perspect, sorry, prospective jury pool, which were our 7th and 8th grade ASB students. We stressed confidentiality. All components of the process were reviewed. We got parent permission-
So during the first meeting of the jury of peers, the first step in this long process is carried out. This step is to question the victim, or to question the bully. These questions that we use at our school are, number one, what type of bullying or harassment did you participate in? Number two, how did it affect the victim? Number three, this is your third reported incident of bullying. Why do you think you continue being a bully? And number four, how will you do things differently in the future so that you stop harassing and bullying others here at MMS? Okay. So after we go over these questions, we receive their responses and then maybe ask a couple of follow-up questions to make sure we understand the case. And then after that, we hand out an anti-harassment/anti-bullying research project. This project is to be presented in an oral essay or written research paper, a PowerPoint presentation, or a trifold board presentation within one week. Both, all of these presentations need to include the following questions. Number one, what are the causes of effects, wait, causes and effects of bullying on a school campus? Number two, why do students bully others? What are their reasons for bullying? Number three, what are some of the typical personal characteristics of bullies? Number four, how does being bullied affect victims? Number five, how does the culture of bullying impact the entire school climate? And number five, reflecting on your current situation, what have you learned? How will you act differently in the future? After we discuss this bullying research project, we will go over the rubric. This rubric is numbered from zero to three, three being the best. If a student receives a three on their project, the student will be relieved from suspension entirely. If a student receives a two, they will also be relieved from suspension, but will be assigned an additional community service requirement. If a student receives a one or a zero, they will indeed be suspended. Okay. So one week later on the due date, the student will come back for a second meeting of jury of peers.
And another one of our jurors, Josh Ruiz, is going to tell you about the second meeting, the presentation by the bully.
During the second meeting of the jury of peers process, this is when the bully presents his side, or his research project to the jury. And after the bully is done presenting his research project, this is when the jury, we ask clarifying questions to make sure that the bully understood, like, what he was talking about. And we really check to make sure that, like, the bully didn't just copy and paste what he wrote on his presentation. So, and after we're done asking questions about the bully's presentation, this is when we review the bully's grade and we review the rubric. And at this time, the bully is in a separate room with one of the counselors or our principal. And when we're deliberating what score we think that the bully should get, we usually take in mind whether the bully, like, read his project or he used his own words to describe his presentation. And after we've come up with the verdicts of, for the bully, we call him back in so that he can hear it.
All right. Now it's time to discuss what Josh and I truly think about jury of peers. We both agree that jury of peers really affects, I must, positively, because it's a learning opportunity rather than just a punishment. Because, for example, if a student is given just a suspension, then they'll go home, think about what they did for 10 minutes, and then click on their favorite TV show now because they have days to, you know, sit there. But if you really get into a research project, you're going to want to try your best just to not get suspended, because that isn't good. So what you need to do is you really need to research it. And hopefully, the bullying question will go deeper and look for, you know, research and sort of understand how truly awful this is and how bullying really affects Marshall. And I think this really opens a door for the bullying question into the world of anti-bullying and anti-harassment.
One of the positive things about jury of peers is that, well, for one, it's different than having an adult or the principal or a counselor to evaluate the bullying. And one of the good things about this is that when bullies, when they bully, when they bully others, they do it so that they can impress people. And basically, we, when, when the bully is in front of the jury, and because the jury's peers, we think...
We want to positively influence. So they want to, they want to show that they can do it. They want to impress us, pretty much.
Yeah. And so when bullies, I think, okay, so I think one of the good things about that bullies, they want to impress people, is that they also want to impress the jury. So I think when they're trying to impress the jury, they, this kind of motivates them to try harder. And, you know, while they're trying harder to impress the jury, which is positive, this also gives them the opportunity to learn about how, about bullying, so.
And this concludes our jurors' evaluations. We now return the floor to Mrs. Eileen Akers.
Thank you. Very quickly, this is our results data on the policy and the program. Before we implemented this program and policy, the year September '08 through June '09, we had six total reports of bullying entered into the Zangal database in an entire year. The first few months before we implemented the policy, of the following year, we had five reports of bullying entered into Zangal. After we implemented the program, including the Teen Truth Live Bully and everything else you've heard about, January to June, five and a half months, 68 reports of bullying entered into the database. And we truly don't believe that our program has increased the amount of bullying. We believe that it's increased the reporting of bullying because kids now feel that they're supported, that they're heard, and that there's a consequence, and it's safe. So 42 of those 68 are first offenses, eight are second, three are third, and they went to the jury, and one is a fourth. You can see that the number of times that kids repeat the offense is drastically reduced. And this is this year's data, in just the first three months, 14 first offenses, three are second, with just one this year, two from last year. One is third. We've had one jury of peers this year and a suspension. So pretty, I think, significant impact. And the final thing, we are in second semester, going to, you have a copy of this, we created a harassment survey for our students, and we're going to roll this out via Naviance and give it to the students and see, get their opinion on how they think we're doing. So that's our policy and our program, and thank you for listening.
Excellent job. Thank you very much. Excellent job. Any comments or questions from board members?
No, thank you very much. And maybe I just missed it for me, but your survey, you're going to do, are you going to do it once a year or throughout the year? How many times during the year will it be done?
This year, we're going to do, it's kind of going to be a post-survey because it's going to be after the fact, but we'd like to pre- and post-test from now on. But this will be second semester.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. And then just quickly, Dr. Meyer, how is this program informing the task force work that we've...
I was just going to say, I want to thank Angela Bass, Michelle Irwin, and Counselor Akers, is that correct? And the students, because it is extremely timely, we are beginning a district-wide bullying task force. And I would like to encourage, if there's anyone who's interested, either from the, from Marshall Middle School or any other areas, to let me know, and we would like, we would welcome participation. But this task force will look at bullying across our schools, and we're going to look at exemplary programs, which certainly yours will be one of. And it's perfect timing, so thank you very much.
Mr. Burnett?
That was a great presentation. Just a couple of thoughts on your survey, before you, or when you revised it maybe later, is obviously, the internet, as you mentioned on here, is one of the places where students were asked if they were bullied, and then you say the phone. And I just wonder if you should differentiate between the phone and texting on the phone because, versus... I, you know, as a parent of two young girls who attend city schools, I'm definitely, as a parent, concerned about this issue. And as a school board member, I also want to make sure that our review looks at, very strongly, at cyberbullying and the legal implications, because there are questions if someone does something out of school, and it's, is it, are we able to impact that and, as well? But I really appreciate all this great work you've done. Thank you.
Terrific presentation. Thanks very much. Great. We'll now move on to item C1. So this is our administrative assignment. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Barr. The board has approved the following personnel assignments. Daniel Gilbreth to manage your transportation operations, transportation services, Office of the Deputy Superintendent of Business. Michael Rude to principal, Mount Everest Academy, Office of the Deputy Superintendent for Academics. And Pamela Tip to Labor Relations Specialist, Labor Relations Office, Human Resources Services Division, Office of the Deputy Superintendent for Business.
Right, thanks. Do you want to move into your...
Yes. Let me move on to my bi-weekly comments. A number of items I want to bring up. First and foremost, each of these updates, I like to focus on the school visits. In the past two weeks, I've had the good pleasure of accompanying two of our area superintendents, Brenda Campbell and Marion Phelps, on campus tours in their particular clusters. So I spent time at Crawford High School, Morris High School, Madison High School, and also Innovation Middle. A nice mix of the high schools in various parts of the district. And the one middle school I want to talk about for just a quick moment. Innovation Middle has only been in existence for a couple of years, and this is a school that we tried to make a critical technology insertion across all grades and all subjects. And I was truly impressed this past Friday when I was there. Wonderful, eclectic mix of students, staff, working together, and great collaboration. And just the way they're using the technology, it ranged from Spanish and math to a school workbook, textbook setting. And the interaction, I think, is something to behold, and I think really something that we should have many visitors see what we can do at the middle school years, cross-the-board technology insertion. A couple of other items I want to highlight at the high school level, I had the opportunity to join Pat Crowder and a couple of busloads of seniors from Patrick Henry High School. We went to something called Justice 101, and I've shared the information with all of the area superintendents, because for me, this is one of the best Life 101 sessions that I've ever been to, where Judge Frederick Link from the Superior Court, among a team of judges rotating across the year, have an opportunity to talk to our kids about the realities of drinking and driving, drugs, date rape, physical and cyberbullying and the like. And after that hour and a half-plus discussion with the kids, they are then assigned to go view real legal proceedings across the various courtrooms, and then come back for a wrap-up session with him. And the seniors think tremendously about it. It's one of the memorable experiences. We currently have only about six of our high schools involved, and I'd like to see how we can expand that to all of the schools, if that possible. So more to follow on that. Few more items in the area of legislative advocacy. We had the opportunity, President Barrera and Bernie Reinderson and I, to talk to Senator Chris Kehoe about our concerns, the current budget, and where we should go with the legislative engagement. And then the following day, have Assemblyman Nathan Fletcher tour IHI to give them an understanding of where online education is a critical issue for us here in the school district and to help with advocacy. Couple other items, had the opportunity to address the special education, CAC, last week, talk about our Vision 2020, our community-based reform, and also where special education test results are and how we're working together. This past Friday, Central Elementary School was the, I think, the centerpiece of grade community engagement. We had a grand opening of a medical clinic, which is a partnership between Price Charities and a couple of our community medical service providers, La Maestra and Medical Clinic of San Diego. And what made it such a wonderful win-win for us is that Price Charities philanthropic arm was able to support funding. Two medical clinics provide the servicing, and our own PPO artisans and technicians did the construction work, all working together, and it was a wonderful turnout. The last item, I think it's timely that I note that the board has provided direction that we have an alternative education framework within the school district, the Met School. And I'm going to ask the county superintendent if he would assist us in doing an analysis or review of the alternative educational framework, its grading structure, its curriculum and so forth, just to make sure that it is a fully focused program, and there's more to follow on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board information reports, Dr. Evans?
Thank you. This week, I was able to go to, or last week, I should say, to Madison High School for the dedication of the new auto tech facility. It was a very impressive facility with eight bays, very modern, all computerized in terms of the current automotive technology. And this is really a good example of what we are talking about in our mission statement of preparing students for college and/or career. These are preparing students for real jobs, jobs that cannot be outsourced to another country. It prepares them, whether they go directly into the workforce as auto technicians or whether they go on in mechanical engineering or another field. Excuse me. We have other programs like this in the district, electrical programs that prepare students to become electricians or go on to be electrical engineers, and construction technicians or civil engineers. So we're really preparing students in a very complete sort of way. And I was very happy at the ceremony for the dedication, because it really showed the broad array of what we offer in our high schools. It began with the presentation by the JRTC Color Guard. There's a national anthem by the music department. We are right next to the Big Theater, which has produced great theatrical presentations. And just last week, also, the Madison Warhawks made it to be the CIF champions for Division Four, and we're going to be watching them as they go on to play further at this point. And this morning, I had a chance to go to Lincoln High School and talk to a government class, asking a lot of questions about what the school board does. One of the questions was, what is, what is most rewarding? And my answer is, well, I'll tell you what's most unrewarding, is when you sit up here and hear about really great programs, educational offerings that we have, and the possibility of them being cut. It's unfortunate that when we go through a period like this, we find out some of the real, real value that we, that we have in the district. We talked about Proposition J and the fact that we got a majority, 51% of the voters supported it. However, according to our crazy rules here in California, you need a two-thirds vote for it to pass. I'm actually inclined to ask the people in San Diego to, we talked about $98 per household. There's nothing to stop the 51% who voted to do that, to contribute, to still contribute that $98 to some sort of fund for the district, to keep public education going. And I also want to express appreciation to Mr. Wren for his comments about the future of public education. One of the things about it is that we, there are a lot of critics of public education who say it's failing, and it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy, because if they keep taking away the funds for, for public education, they will eventually win and prove their point. However, I think one of the things we have to be very careful about, some people will be seeing, going out in the community, seeing people passing out petitions, saying things about improving our schools and accountability and so forth. The real issue is, some people believe that they have a better idea of how to run the schools than the voters, and they would like to have special interests, appoint board members, rather than be elected by the public. So if you agree with the system that says we should have appointed officials, I lived in a country for a little while where actually everybody was appointed by the dictator, then, you know, you could support that policy. But I think it's really important that we keep our public schools in control of the community, because they belong to all of us. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Certainly. Tended cluster meetings, Lincoln, Crawford cluster. I also made a pit stop by the DeVeau Conference, and very happy to see our staff there expanding. It's a great conference, and thank you for, Ms. Carberry, for getting me into the conference. I didn't have a ticket, and I was trying to sneak in, and so she came to my rescue, so thank you very much, because I like to update myself as well. But I also want to take a moment and say happy holidays to all of our staff. I know that people say I'm kind of short and kind of crude to the staff, and I want to tell the staff, I really appreciate everything that you do, and happy holidays. I know school ends in a few days, but thank you for what you do.
Mr. Burnett?
Well, this is, this first week in office has been a blur, and I did not keep track of even the various meetings and commissions and people I met with, and I...
I know school ends a few days, but thank you for what you do.
Ms. Barnett?
Well, this is, this first week in office has been a blur, and I did not keep track of even the various meetings and commissions and people I met with, and I really can't remember what I did the last week. But I swear, I was working really hard. The only thing I remember is last night going to the Morris Cluster meeting, and that was very enlightening and educational. But now that I know I need to come here with my homework, and Milo did not eat my homework. I did not prepare it, so.
Thanks. And I'd like to echo the superintendent's comments about the Central Elementary opening of the health clinic, which it's, Mr. Barnett might not remember, but he was there too. Yeah. It's just a really, I think, fantastic partnership between the school, the Price Charities Foundation and La Maestra and Mid-City Family Health Clinics, and our district staff who built the clinic. And it's an acknowledgement that the Central Elementary, under the leadership of Principal Cindy Martin, their slogan is, "Dream big, be kind, work hard, and no excuses." And the health clinic is part of, I believe, all of that, but especially the no excuses theme because it's easy, it would be easy for the folks at Central Elementary to say that the students who, you know, who come to the school, that the school is only responsible for those students during school hours and when they're, you know, within the gates of the school. But we know that many of the kids at Central and throughout our district, that our school nurse, or in some, you know, few examples, our school health clinics are really the only place that our kids have access to a health professional. And so what we've done now with the Central Clinic is, it's a clinic that's open from 8:00 till 5:00 every day to see not only our students, but their families. And it's coordinating the work of the school nurse with the health professionals at the clinic, and the idea is to expand that coordination into several of the other schools in the City Heights area. So it's really an acknowledgement about how important our schools are and can be to our families beyond what we do during the school day. Really quickly, I'd like to say congratulations to Bernie Elementary School, right here. Bernie ranked, of all the schools in our district, number one in the month of November for attendance, so I'd really like to acknowledge the work of Bernie. I'd also like to encourage anybody who has an opportunity to get out to Kimbrough Elementary tomorrow night from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. This is the student art exhibitions, and the students there have been working with professional artists from the Loyah Playhouse, the Museum of Photographic Arts, the Timken Museum. It's going to be a great exhibition by the students who've been working really hard at Kimbrough. And then Superintendent Koba and many of us had an opportunity to be at San Diego High yesterday morning for the groundbreaking of three facilities that have been built under our Prop S program. One was multimedia design studio, really state-of-the-art television studio. One was a facility in the business school for the student store, and it's a lot, you know, much more than sort of what we probably think of as a typical student store. And then we had the culinary arts program, a really professional kitchen. 900 students at the high school are involved in these different programs, and again, it's really rethinking what high school can be. And I want to thank Sean Locher and Stuart Markey on our staff for getting that done. And we were joined by our newly-elected Assembly Member, Tony Atkins, because those projects were built half and half, financing from Prop S and from the state school facilities program. So with that, can we get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Please vote. Let's move on to item E1. So this is just a summary of our 2010-11 single site plans.
Yeah, thank you, President Barrera. I'd like to have Ron Rodi, our Chief Accountability Officer, provide us an update on the SPSAs.
Good evening. As you know, we are a little bit out of sync with our typical schedule for bringing SPSAs before you. And as a little bit of background, of course, we had anticipated doing this last spring, but we ran into some issues with our adoption of a new online budgeting tool, and that necessitated moving these to this particular timeframe. And because of that, we asked you in September to extend the existing SPSAs for a period of time until such time as these current ones are being brought forward. And so a single plan for student achievement is, of course, a school's business or strategic plan to produce student achievement throughout the year. And this plan is developed in conjunction with the school leadership team and as well as its school site council, who must eventually approve the SPSA for that site. And our staff in our office, our monitoring and reporting, and accountability reporting, rather, works closely with each site to provide assistance and training in how to develop the SPSA, and also making sure that expenditures are aligned with state regulations and federal At this time, you have before you 52 plans that are fully approved. We have several more, probably about 70 in total, that have gone through the final process. We have a few more that are awaiting one or two items of clarification from some sites or a final budget approval, but we'll have more for you at the first meeting in January. And just a note about the budget grids that you're seeing, all of those came from the same source, but as the individual staff members, our resource changes, or working with sites, they pulled them down into some other tools, and so they look a little bit different. But I just want to assure you that the budget source is the same for all of those. And prior to getting final approval, each of the plans is also vetted with the appropriate area superintendent, so that as the schools went through and looked at, did their needs assessment, looking at what their goals should be, the area superintendents reviewed those and agreed that the implementation of the supports and programs that each site has identified are appropriate to meet the goals that they have established. So that's a brief comments on the purpose of them and what we're bringing for you. I entertain questions if there are any.
Ms. Jackson?
The follow-up, the monitoring of this, what does that look like now? I know a couple of years ago, we was trying to start what we would monitor it halfway through the year last year, and that didn't, I guess, work out. And then go to every quarter this year, and I guess because we're off schedule, that's not going to work out. So the question is, how are we going to be monitoring these reports? And for Mr. Barnett, just so he understands what I'm talking about, is we used to get these plans and they go on the shelf somewhere, and they go on the shelf. And the goal was to make them meaningful because people spend a lot of time and energy putting these plans together. And if they held accountable for those plans, then it would actually move academic programs forward. And so because we hadn't had anything in place, we started, we tried to do something the first year and then move it forward. So the question is, what is the plan for that now?
We have a commitment from our vendor for the SVB tool to move all of the current plans into an actual online database. So all of the goals and the targets that each site has set will be in a database. We'll be able to pull those out individually and match those against our, whatever indicators the sites have said they're going to be using. So we expect that process to be completed probably around February. So shortly thereafter, we hope to be able to pull, again, a full report that says for individual sites, how they're progressing with their targets.
To clarify, so basically, at that point, would the information be going in on an ongoing basis? For example, new test data or something comes in and is just automatically loaded onto there?
It won't be automatically loaded into the tool at this point. So the static document that you have tonight for the 52 schools, that document for each school will be loaded into the database. It will remain static for the year, but we can use those data from particular fields in that database to match against the data we get from data director, for example, with the benchmark exams, and see if sites are making the progress that they had identified.
Okay.
Yes, Superintendent?
Maybe I can help to clarify what I think Ms. Jackson was asking. It is our requirement that we hold the principal and leadership staff at the campus and the area superintendents accountable or responsible for the implementation of the SPSAs, and for Ron to be that monitoring source at the central office to look across the district, to ensure there is compliance. So, you know, we moved in small steps, I think, in the last couple of years, and Ms. Jackson brings that up. But it's not just about loading into electronic system, it's about executing, and that's where we want to go.
All right. Good. Can we get a motion to approve the single site plans in a second?
Okay.
Okay, please vote. Okay, great. Thank you, Ron. Okay, let's move to item E2. This is the continuing discussion of establishing a feeder middle school for Lincoln High School. Superintendent?
Actually Deputy Superintendent Academics, Dr. Marwood.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we are asking for action on an item that is the next step, am I not on? Can you hear me? That is the next step in building a strong K-12 cluster in the Lincoln community. And this will involve looking at the enrollment, redistributing some of the Prop S funds, and as well coming up with a transition plan. So at this point, I would like to invite Brenda Campbell, Area Superintendent, Area One, to come to the podium, and she will fully discuss the plan.
I've prepared a speech for you so I can make sure that I'm very clear and articulate the reasons why we're doing this and more information and background. After I do a presentation, then Shirley Wilson will come up and give you information about some data, and then I believe Phil Stover is going to help us with facility, with information about the facility. Okay? Community-based reform, what does it mean? To Area One, it means doing everything possible to break the predictability of the links between race, poverty, and educational outcomes by substantially improving the academic and social achievement of all students. All means all. In order to break these predictable links, the Area One community is requesting the Board of Trustees' approval to build an infrastructure that will address the unacceptably low achievement that currently characterize our schools. Establishing feeder middle schools in Lincoln Cluster is a piece of a much larger vision for the community. The Board approved community-based school reform model, which is the part of the Board's Vision 2020 for educational excellence, which includes the development of professional learning communities, data-driven instruction, parent engagement, and goals for student achievement. This model has empowered Area One stakeholders within our clusters to improve student achievement. The first action taken by these stakeholders is to establish feeder middle schools to build a solid articulation across grade levels and collaboration between schools through active parent engagement. Currently, there is limited accountability and responsibility for what happens to middle-level students in our community. There is not a system to place, in place to track accountability and responsibility. The responsibility of the middle students that attend Lincoln High School is spread over 56 different middle schools. Who has the responsibility for the success of our middle-level students? Area One needs to create a structure for responsibility and accountability for the middle school students. Every neighborhood should have a good middle school accessible to their community. Parents should have a clear expectation and understanding of the education their children will receive on the path to high school. Establishing an infrastructure will create the foundation to enable us to break the predictable link of race and poverty and educational attainment. Developing a fully defined pre-K, 12 feeder system that is true cluster will help us address and diminish high dropout rates, lack of parent involvement, disproportionate number of students of color placed in special education, lack of effective teacher retention, disconnect of a quality academic program across grade levels, lack of access and success of students completing A through G requirements for college, lack of students of color passing algebra, lack of cultural competency among teachers and administrators. The lack of middle schools deprives us of the structure that connects and sustains the two ends of the academic continuum for student, creates a hole, thus a breakage in the link for academic success. Establishing feeder middle schools is essential piece for improving student achievement. The Area One community proposes to establish two feeder middle schools for Lincoln High School. With the large geographical area of the attendance boundaries in the Lincoln area, there's a need to provide two middle schools in walking distance as feeders to Lincoln High School. Millennial Tech and Knox were identified by the community as the two schools that would serve as feeder middle schools to Lincoln High School. It is proposed to increase the enrollment at Millennial Tech by expanding the capacity of the facilities, add a third floor to the new two-story classroom building, thereby increasing the capacity to 200, to 833. Solidify Johnson STEM student enrollment by automatic enrollment to Johnson's 5th graders in Millennial Tech Middle School. Maintain Webster STEM as priority for student enrollment. Reevaluate Magnet Cluster enrollment. Knox K-8 School was approved by the Board to be a feeder middle school to Lincoln High School. It is proposed at Lincoln that Knox services grades 5 through 8 for a year and grades 6 through 8 in the year 2012-13. Knox will implement STEM focus with departmentalized instruction. The Prop S modernization will be completed by 2013-14. Porter Elementary will implement a STEM focus for pre-K through 5th grade next year, 2011-12. To implement a smooth transition of establishing the two middle schools for Lincoln Cluster, it is proposed to hire hourly retired administrative support. There are approximately 20,000 students that represent the families of Area One that are counting on San Diego Unified School District to help us break the predictability of the educational outcomes of disenfranchised students living in Area One. Community-based reform and its inclusion of true feeder clusters provide a powerful model that can drive the change necessary to sustain academic excellence. Every neighborhood should have a good middle school accessible in their community. The proposal to identify Millennial Tech as a feeder to Lincoln High School is important to the Area One families and critical to the success of Area One students. We ask the Board of Trustees' approval. In the words of Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do what is right." Superintendent Koba, Board, I'm going to have comments about the Area One Lincoln enrollment data. For the 2010-11 school year, there are 2,166 students in grades 6 through 8 in the Lincoln Cluster attendance area. Of the 2,166 students, 1,196, or 55%, attend an Area One middle school, a K-6 school, or attend a K-8 school, inclusive of both public and charter schools. 970, or 45% of the Area One students, attend other district schools using the VEEP, Magnet, and/or Choice programs. Included in the 970 students are 83 Area One resident students who attend Millennial Tech Middle School. 35% of the students in Area One attend charter schools, with 20% of the students remain in the Area One public middle school, K-8, K-4, K-6 school. If the MTM middle schools-
If the MTM middle school counts are included with the Area One resident students, the number would increase to 25 percent of our students attending a resident school in Area One, reducing the district schools' attendance from 45 percent to 40 percent. When considering the Area One school enrollment data, the Area One resident public school options have a fewer number of students when compared to charter and other district schools due to limited options. It is important in Area One for parents and students to have a middle school option that supports a pre-kindergarten through grade 12 articulated academic program. Expanding the option for Area One to have a pre-K through 12 academic continuity is important to increase the opportunities for students to participate in a viable educational program that prepares them for college and career goals. The enrollment capacity at Lincoln High School is almost 2,700 students. Presently, there are 2,056 students enrolled. It is important to consider expanding the articulated public school option for students and their parents who live in the Lincoln Cluster area. Potentially, Area One students will have the option of attending Knox with a projected enrollment of 862, MTM with a maximum enrollment of 833. Students may also remain in a K-6 elementary school in addition to charter schools, Choice, Magnet, and VEEP programs. Thank you.
Make a motion? Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Sim.
Okay. If I could just make a comment or two in addition about the physical construction. We are looking at the MTM campus of adding to the already planned building of 12 classrooms to add and to increase that to 18. That will provide the space, as you've been told, for 833 students when that is completed. The current medically fragile unit that is housed there will be moved to Kimbrough, and that space will be used for locker rooms. And it's been designed in such a way that next to that space, there is room, space for a gymnasium to be done at some time in the future. The plan as outlined to you and the plan as designed by Mr. Markey's groups will not negatively impact the Gompers strategic plan. There'll be no encroachment or any problems there. Knox, you've already approved it. It is on the list as one of the very first whole-site modernizations. Design work has been changed a bit in order to fit the needs of a middle school. From what was originally designed, that work is in progress. We do believe that the students will be housed on one part of the property while the work will be begun on another, and that the work will indeed be done over a two-year period of time, being done in '13 and '14. So both plans are possible within the dollars that have been allocated within the Prop S utilization, and we believe we can make it happen in a timely manner as projected.
Jackson?
I have a motion, and I want to read the motion because it's a little bit different than what was in the board packet. This is what was submitted December 2nd via Board Docs, and it reads as follows. Recommendation to establish a feeder middle school for Lincoln High School. Number one, establish Millennial Tech MTM School as a residential magnet with a science, technology, engineering, and math focus to serve as a middle school for Lincoln High School. Expected enrollment includes 70 percent Lincoln resident students and 30 percent non-resident students. Johnson Elementary and Webster Elementary are priority schools for MTM enrollment. Johnson Elementary existing 5th graders' students will automatically be enrolling MTM, and Webster Elementary existing 6th graders' students to be given priority for the 7th grade openings. An allocation, which already was approved, item number two was approved at a previous board meeting, I'm sorry, item number two, allocate the $4 million in Prop S fund to add six new classrooms to a two-story building at MTM, thereby increasing the capacity to 833 students. Number three, transition plan described in the attached report for Knox K-8 to a middle school serving grades 6 through 8, reconfigure Porter Elementary K through 5, or in pre-K through 5, really. And number four, to change the name of Knox K-8 School to a Knox Middle School, not to change it totally, but to make the name fit what it actually is. That's my motion.
Okay. Mr. President, for the purpose of discussion, I'll second the motion. Okay, great. We've got several public speakers, and it looks like more, so I'm going to ask Ms. Ward to limit time to two minutes apiece because we have so many speakers. And so I'll start by calling Dr. Shirley Weber.
I'm Dr. Shirley Weber. I'm professor at San Diego State University, as well as the Executive Director of the Association of African-American Educators. We are totally in support of Ms. Sheila Jackson's proposal for this particular board. I want to give you a little bit institutional memory because many of you are new, and I want you to understand that first, that Millennium Tech came into existence because of the need of Johnson Elementary School. People forget that, but that's why Millennium Tech came into existence, because of the lack of a middle school in that community. Also, I want to give you some institutional memory about Gompers itself in terms of the Gompers Magnet. This whole proposal reeks of the same thing that happened to Gompers in the '80s, where African-American and Hispanic children who lived in its own community were not allowed to attend the school in that community. And there was great, great concern about that, and eventually, we had to open it up as a residential magnet in order to give opportunity. What this community is asking is what every board member up here wants and demands for his or her own community, and that is a feeder-patter system where it allows children to go from K through 12 and attend schools in their own community. None of you would ever tolerate having what has happened in this community to your community, where your children would be forced to leave its own community in order to attend school. You would not tolerate that, nor would you tolerate having your school majority occupied by other individuals unless there was some extreme reason, such as a low enrollment of your own children in your own community. Anytime we've approached more than 50 percent of a community, that community becomes concerned that it's no longer a neighborhood school, and you know that. And so I ask you not to do anything special, but to give us what we deserve, to give this community the equity and the educational opportunities that you would want for your own children and for the communities that you are here to serve. Those who have the 40-20-20-20 flyers out here also, once again, are giving you back exactly what we don't want. It's a 70-30 reality. We want the majority of our children to have access to Millennium Tech. So I hope you will do what is right, what is decent, and what this district has learned over the years is the only thing you can do to be fair and just to the children who live in District E. Thank you.
I'd like to call Marcy Burt, Jamal Jabril, Willie Bogan, Jeremiah Potter, and Lisa Lake.
Superintendent Koba and board members, my name is Willie Bogan, and my address is on file. I'm here to support the proposal to limit the MTM student population to 600 and to provide a 40-60 split in terms of residential and non-residential students. I teach, I'm a master teacher at Millennial Tech Middle School in engineering. Also, I teach robotics. I also teach Mesa, which is a new class established by the district. I'm also a former college professor in physics, mathematics, and biological science. I have a vast, I just want you to know that ahead of time. Because of the rigor of a successful STEM magnet requires motivated teachers and parents, and that's what we have at Millennium Tech, highly motivated parents and teachers. I think I can stand, and I also have highly motivated colleagues who teach along with me. As I understand, 40-60 split, the problem is that, one, that enough residential students, I live in the resident, I live in the community I teach in, and as I understand, no student has been denied to come in who wanted to come in who's a residential student. So 40-60 split sounds good. If there were evidence to the contrary, I think then I would be on the other side, but I'm not. We have an active parent guardians who come to the school because the kids need to be there. I teach in the school, and the kids want to be there. Teaching STEM, teaching the courses I teach, I need motivated parents, and I need motivated kids. Unmotivated, I've had those, and it walks away with disaster. Also, and lastly, I wanted to stress that we have students who are meeting the challenge, students who are from the community, students who are from different areas, who are meeting the challenge because they want to be there, they're meeting the challenge of a rigorous curriculum. And lastly, I also wanted to say, forcing students to go into a STEM magnet and forcing students, too many students into a STEM magnet is, in my professional opinion, counterproductive. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Board members, my address is also on file. I'm speaking here as a parent, as a teacher.
Could you give us your name, sir?
My name is Jamal Jabril. I'm speaking here as a parent. I have three kids who go to San Diego Unified School District, and I'm also a teacher at San Diego Unified School District. And I echo the sentiments of Mr. Bogan. Millennium MTM is a small campus. If you have been to Millennium Tech, I think the changes which are being proposed will negatively impact the school. And the community and the parents support the 40 percent Lincoln Cluster, 20 percent Cluster One, 20 percent Cluster Two, and 20 percent Cluster Three. And I support maintaining the above representation for students who want to attend MTM. There is a nice diversity mix in the students that attend MTM as they travel far because they like the programs at MTM. Most of the programs are engineering, science, and math. And if a student is not interested in those programs, they'll have a tough time in MTM. By increasing the enrollment in the Lincoln Cluster, that should be able to satisfy, considering all the other factors. Okay? And I look at San Diego Unified as a big family, and we should allow students who are interested in this type of programs to be able to access those programs no matter where they live. Thank you.
Marcy Burt, Jeremiah Potter, Lisa Lake, James Harrell, and Pamela Moorhead.
My name's James Harrell. My address is 3225 Nile Street, 92104. I'm the parent of a current Millennial Tech Middle School student. As you know, the middle school years are a tough time for students as they form their identities, they're mature. This could be a make-or-break time in these students' lives. The MTM program gives these kids a haven for positive learning. When we're looking at middle schools, my son found out about MTM. I didn't know anything about it, and he was the one that made the choice to not continue with his, all of his friends. He left, this was an important program to him, the science, technology was an interest to him, and I was really proud of the courage that took to leave everyone that he knew behind to come to a different school. He came on one day near the beginning of the school year, and he told me, "Middle school is the coolest thing ever," which, that kind of enthusiasm, I know I certainly didn't have in middle school. It was a tough time for me. You know, I don't want to see that type of appetite for learning toyed with. These students have all made a conscious choice to come to MTM, to this positive learning environment. I fail to see the logic in tampering with one of the best-performing middle school programs south of the I-8. The primary reason for altering the program MTM seems to be as an antidote for declining enrollment at Lincoln High School. The feeder proposal seems to be a case of treating the symptom of the decline rather than the disease. The proposal you're being asked to consider was concocted during a poorly advertised series of meetings, including one meeting that was scheduled with very little notice and coincided with MTM's Math Night. It was tacked onto an agenda at Lincoln High School's Honor Roll Students Assembly. I urge you instead to consider the proposal put forth by the MTM community. Proceed with the current measured growth plan, maintain the TIBIC funding, and put forth the 40-20-20-20 Plan of Enrollment Quotas. Contrary to documentation that you have presented, these petitions that I have in hand and I'd like to present represent the true statement of the affected community.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pamela?
My name is Pamela Moorhead, and my address is on file. We are all aware that for our children to be able to compete in this global society, that they're going to have to be proficient or above in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Johnson Elementary is the only elementary STEM magnet in this district. Students attending Johnson engage in the only engineering lab with a curriculum, a science lab, and project resource lab. And we also demonstrate proficiency in mathematics with a 61.5 percent of our students performing at or above proficiency, while the district requirement is only 59.6 percent and the state's requirement is 57.4 percent. The students in Area One are intelligent students. The students in Area One, the students in Area One deserve the best education possible to help them in a global society. That is STEM. Our goal is to continue to raise the academic bar of achievement for Johnson students. So we are here tonight to request that the district maintain Johnson's residential STEM Magnet focus, continue to provide Magnet transportation, continue to provide STEM resource and support, and give Johnson students priority enrollment into the only STEM middle school in the district. Johnson, parents, guardians, teachers, and students want all our students not just to compete, but to thrive in the 21st century in technology and innovation. We understand the budget challenges that you must face, but our children should not have to fight for a seat at the table of quality education. That seat should be guaranteed to them. Our children are not our future. They are the here and the right now, and what we do not do for them tonight will cut them off at their knees. Thank you.
Kathryn Lopez, Karen Brooks, Christine Holstad, Sean Sand, and Michelle Maeva.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board. My name is, excuse me, Kathryn Lopez. My daughter is a 5th grader at Valencia Park and came to me because she has the option of going to a CPA, my alma mater, CPMA, but she's of going to a CPA, my alma mater, CPMA, but she loves science and so she wants to go to Millennial. So we're discussing this right now. I got an email last month that there was a surprise meeting being held at Lincoln. I got there, there was maybe three or four parents from MTM there, and the rest were people there for an awards ceremony and some neighborhood people. I live in Paradise Hills, so it's my district too. And I was surprised at the nature of the meeting because, from what I had gathered, I'd missed a couple of meetings prior to that, was that they wanted to make this school a residential magnet. My daughter's school currently is primarily residential since the exiting of the bus system last year, and it's difficult because it's hard to get people from other neighborhoods. Right up the street from MTM, right down the street from Lincoln, is an area, sorry, known as the Four Corners of Death. You bring in the neighborhood kids that are not high proficient in science, engineering, math, that are maybe from, you know, they're being bused somewhere else, that's fine. If they want to go to that school, they should have to have the academic structure and background to go to that school. Because you're inviting gangs, drugs, prostitution. I work outside, I work for the utility, and so I see a lot of this in the area. And I have to tell you, our school's security and our police force has done really well at keeping a lot of this out of the schools. But if you want to take this from being a STEM magnet to a neighborhood magnet, you're inviting in a lot of problems and a lot of distractions from these children's learning.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And I'd have to ask everybody here to please be respectful of every speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. But it really is, you have to understand, it's important to these children.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Brooks. My address is on file. And my head is spinning with how many times this proposal has changed. Frankly, as a parent, I am disappointed by the actions of the people trying to take MTM away from the kids who really want to be there. I realize that the kids who presently attend will be able to finish their term, but what about the kids who are excited about a future that includes MTM? The parents have put together a proposal that gives something to both sides of the issue. It's a much fairer solution. Johnson and Webster remain the main STEM feeder elementary schools for Millennial. We're not going to take that away, who wants to do that? It also keeps the kids south of the I-8 freeway as a priority, unlike the other proposal. Where's the compromise on the other side? With the proposal that I have right here, that I got from the Area One Superintendent's School District website, I noticed that once the residents and the sibling kids were enrolled, the next group given priority is Cluster One: Claremont, Henry, La Jolla, Point Loma, Scripps Ranch, and University City. That's not Area One. I don't understand that. After all that complaining, why would that be the next cluster allowed in? I also noticed that twenty-four percent of the kids currently come from the Morse area. Yet with the proposal set forth by the Area Superintendent's Office, Morse kids have no chance of getting in. They're not even on the list, they're taken out of the cluster. Why are these kids being excluded? And now the number of kids keeps going up. The current proposal is for eight hundred and thirty-three kids. When all of this started with me, it was at seven hundred. Currently, there are five hundred and twelve kids enrolled. I understand capacity is six hundred, but there's five hundred and twelve enrolled. We are talking about an increase of three hundred and twenty-one kids. Even if you get a three-story building, and can the ground safely hold all these kids? How are they going to pass through the periods? How are they going to eat lunch? Where are they going to go? It seems that the more the onion is peeled on this whole proposal, the more it stinks.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Board. On behalf of the MTM PE Department, Ms. Lynn Page, Ms. Kelsey Corney, my name is Sean Sand, I live at four-two-four-zero Point Loma Avenue. We are here to not only support our entire school, but to also stand up for our PE program. If the Board elects to increase enrollment at MTM facility beyond the original plan of six hundred to eight hundred and thirty-three, our PE department will be negatively impacted in the safety and space we have to operate our classes. According to the plans, we share facilities with Gompers Prep on a joint-use field, but besides that, we do not have a gymnasium, athletic courts, or grass area to teach. At five hundred and fifteen students, our subpar PE areas are barely cutting it. And it is, and an increase in student per class, and students per class will greatly compromise learning and create overcrowding and unsafe facilities. Classroom teachers may, classroom teachers and their students may have a space in their new two-to-three-story building, but what about our PE classes? Where do we go if it rains? What about when it's extremely hot? We don't have a gymnasium, we have nowhere to go. Please don't divert from the original design plan in capping enrollment at six hundred and keeping our students' overall well-being in mind. Student safety is our first priority. Please make it yours. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Michelle Maeva. My son's a seventh grader at MTM, and we live in the Miramisa area. During his fifth grade year, I started researching all the schools, looking for lower enrollment, project-based learning, and a strong emphasis on math, science, and engineering. There were three schools that I thought would meet the needs for us, but after touring all of them, including my local school that has fourteen hundred kids that I can, my son can walk to. But after touring all the schools and going to MTM and meeting all the teachers and observing the smaller class sizes, seeing the excitement and motivation behind the teaching, seeing the students excel when we went in and had the classroom observation, the technology exposure, the, what I heard earlier, the only STEM program in the district, which includes me, even though we live all the way in Miramisa, we chose MTM, and it was the best decision for my son. He's excelled, he's had a four-point-o the whole year, last year, he's stayed out of trouble, he stays focused. He can be very easily distracted, that's why I put so much time and energy in researching all over San Diego, my options that I would be able to afford, which is public school. MTM is just a great place, it's a special school, they have great teachers, it provides a unique learning opportunity that focuses on the science, the math, and engineering, and it really should be available to all students, I agree. And when we say "all," I don't mean only the neighborhood kids that are in that area, it's all San Diego City School, children that live in the area, which it's not. That's why my son's on the bus for thirty minutes every day going to MTM. I have a daughter in elementary, I would like her to have the same opportunity, to receive the same type of education, and I'm requesting that you vote on the MTM parent proposal tonight and keep the designated magnet status alive as a choice for my daughter, as well as all the other kids around San Diego County that are seeking an education in math, science, engineering. The school is also already, what I've seen, I also have an older son who went through the local school in my area, and the education he's received, he's already excelled far past what my other son did, and is going to better prepare him for college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Christine Holstad, and my address is on file. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Penn Elementary School, and I'm here to speak on behalf of families at Penn. Choosing a middle school for a child is extremely important, and where a child goes to middle school affects their high school academic career and therefore their future. Currently, one option that our families have at Penn have is MTM. And at MTM, students who are interested in math, science, and engineering can pursue their interests in a small supportive learning environment filled with classes in math, science, and engineering. Due to MTM's focus, as well as a small nurturing learning environment, these students will enter high school equipped to pursue honors and AP classes in their chosen area of study. Last week, I had the privilege of touring MTM with a former student's father. His student is currently in fifth grade, he loves science, and he will definitely do much better in a small supportive learning environment. And we just, we love the school. I saw students engaged in their learning, I saw students from Penn that were just doing really, really well. And as I left the school, though, I did realize that there are students who probably will not do well at Penn. Students whose love is visual and performing arts would probably be unfulfilled at MTM. Students who love sports or who thrive in a large social environment would also probably not be fresh, would not be happy there. And as a parent, I have a nineteen-year-old that's an advertising major in college, he would have not done well there. He wouldn't have liked it, he wouldn't have got good grades, and not because he isn't smart, he is very smart, but he has other interests other than math and science, as you know, you can tell by his chosen major. And so, and there are also students who want to pursue fields outside of science, math, and engineering that that really would not be a good fit for. The parents at MTM have proposed an enrollment ratio of forty percent Area Lincoln students and twenty percent Cluster One, Cluster Two, and Cluster Three. Approving this ratio would allow the students who would be best served at MTM, who are interested in STEM, to attend regardless of their address, and it would give our students at Penn a greater chance of being accepted into the school if they chose to apply.
Thanks very much. Okay, Jennifer Polk, Michelle Bryant, Maria Gibson, Maria Leon, and Pat Washington.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Polk, I'm a second-grade teacher at Johnson STEM Magnet Program. My address is on file. A gentleman earlier showed up with his petition of all the people that he signed, this is Johnson's petition. These are just a handful of parents that couldn't make it to this meeting to fight for their children's opportunity to go to a STEM middle school. This is my first year working at Johnson Elementary, and I have to say, I'm blown away by what they're teaching these kids, starting in kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade. Every child has a laptop, they're learning word processing, how to negotiate the internet, research papers. The science program, I have to go home and bring the science experiments home with me before I could teach them to my second graders. Why? I didn't get my first science class until junior high in high school. I'm a byproduct of a non-magnet school, graduated from Miramisa High, San Diego Unified School District. So, they learn everything they need for college to be more successful, to even make it to college. My first two years of college were a struggle because I did not have the core foundation that we're offering these kids. If you take our magnet away, if you take our busing away, if you take their opportunity to go into a middle school that is focused on STEM, which they've been going to since kindergarten, you're slamming the door of opportunity into thousands of children's faces. You're turning the clock back twenty years to when I went to school, putting these kids in that same situation. So I know you all have good integrity, and I know you know what the right thing to do is to support Johnson STEM Magnet. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Bryant, and I've spoken before, so my address is on file. I want to make two points about the MTM proposal this evening. Johnson STEM and MTM entered into a formal agreement before MTM was ever created. Johnson families fought to have MTM. I was one of the people who came before you in the board meetings. We voice our concerns about our students not having a place to go to middle school. Through this fight, an agreement was made that our students receive top priority in enrollment. Johnson STEM students are placed at the top of the list. This should not even be discussed, it's in the choice calendar. Secondly, Heather Potter, the Magnet Resource Teacher and Vice Principal at MTM, and I have marketed both of the campuses as the K-8 STEM solution for the twenty-first century STEM education, it's in many magazines, and we also go to the Magnet Fairs, and we sit next to each other, and we market ourselves as a K-8 solution. Secondly, I urge the Board to consider adding one hundred seats for residents of the northeast of Lincoln. I fall into that category. I'm a resident of Emerald Hills, I have a fifth grader. Families like me have chosen other educational settings, pathways for their options, for elementary options. But because Veep and Magnet Schools might end because of all the budget cuts, I don't have a middle school for my child. Knox is too far away, MTM is much closer. If we do not open the others, the one hundred seats that I'm requesting, what is the solution for my daughter, who's a fifth grader? Where is she to go to school? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Maria Gibson, and my address is on file. I'm the president for the Parent, Teacher, Student Organization at Millennial Tech Middle School. Like many at the school, I represent the families that choice into MTM. You see, we live in the Point Loma Cluster and are fortunate enough to live in an area with wonderful neighborhood schools, so rest assured, our decision of choosing MTM was not an easy one. In the end, it ultimately came down to my daughter's desire to attend MTM based on its unique offerings and opportunities for in-depth studies, specifically in the areas of science and engineering. My concern tonight is twofold. First, the conversations regarding changing MTMs to a proposed resident magnet, therefore changing the feeder patterns of MTM for its current structure to resident priority. It's our belief that making these types of changes will severely change the intent of a traditional magnet program, and therefore not allowing all children the same educational opportunities as resident students. What happened to the district's belief that all students living in this unified district having opportunities to attend special schools? A statement which comes directly from the district's website. Once again, we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. I ask you, by supporting these decisions, what is the true philosophy? Do all kids have the opportunity to attend these specialized schools, or only neighborhood kids? Decisions to attend this school should be based on a children's desire and interest on specialized theme, not based on geography. Would you send a child who wants to study arts to a school that's going to teach them how to build a bridge? I also question why these conversations are taking place now. If the push from the community is to convert MTM into a neighborhood school and build a middle school, I have to ask, wasn't the community aware of the plans for a magnet school in the area on the onset of building it? MTM has only been in operation for three years. Didn't the district and/or its representatives for the area do their due diligence with the community prior to opening a magnet in the neighborhood? Wasn't there proper discussions regarding non-community children attending a school in the community prior to setting up a magnet program? If not, then shame on you. And I hold you responsible for the fact that your lack of planning will now affect the future and current potential of MTM students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Leon, and I live on fifty-one sixty-five Costana Street, and I have five children that are in San Diego City School Districts. I am speaking on behalf of a number of Horton Elementary School parents. We would like to express our support for having a quality middle school in our neighborhood. We support the creation of a middle school at the Knox site, and would also like to request you to allow our children to attend the Millennium Tech Middle School, conveniently located in our neighborhood. We believe the magnet percentage should be changed to seventy percent neighborhood students and thirty percent of out-of-area students. Our middle school children are at great disadvantage right now as they do not have the chance to attend a district-run quality neighborhood middle school to prepare them to be successful for our neighborhood high school. As a child, I was bused, so I know what it's like. I wish I could go to a neighborhood school myself. As a child, I was bused in my community to a school north. It made me believe strongly that my children need to attend a high-quality school in my own community. Our state-of-the-art high school, Lincoln High School, cannot succeed if it does not have the chance to work as a part of a collaborative neighborhood cluster of schools, just as any other high school in our district does. We urge you to give the same rights and privileges to our children that other children in the high school feeder patterns receive. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pat Washington, I live at forty-five thirty-seven Alamo Drive. President Bavara, Superintendent Coburn, Board members. I had a lot to say, so let me just try to condense it. I work with parents in the Project Eugene of the Ballot Parent Center. Also, I'm a part of Equality Alliance, which is an organization that is dedicated to making sure every single child has the best... sure every single child has the best academic resources possible. And then, I'm also a part of the district's effort to implement a plan for having A-3G for all students. I think it's safe to say that those groups, those individuals in them and the people who are making them possible believe in every single child. One of the things that's heartbreaking for me tonight is to listen to parents who are fighting to retain the exact composition of the existing millennium and suggest that the parents that I work for every single day don't have motivated students, aren't motivated parents. We all know that we have an opportunity tonight to make a decision, if you support the resolution, to make sure that we don't succumb to the suggestion that we don't have enthusiastic students in Area 1, in that cluster, who care about math and science. They do. Our parents are not coming to parent advocacy classes because they don't care about making sure they know what their children need to succeed. So, how is it that we're not having a conversation about expanding opportunities and keeping with the community-based reform model that we now are pursuing so diligently? How is it that we're not talking about, if there is possibly an unmotivated student or parent, what else we can do to increase the number of motivated parents without pretending we don't already have motivated parents and students in this cluster? I urge you to really, 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 really make people rise above themselves, be larger than we appear tonight, and work for the best interest of every single child.
I also have a petition from my parents from Horton Elementary School. Thank you.
Okay, Charlethe Richardson, Philip Liebert, Leif Erikson, Claudia Erikson, and Zonies Jones.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Charlethe Richardson, and my address is on file. I've been with a teacher in the district for 32 years. And I feel that you need to know a little bit of the history of a school that was a school within a school where, at first, neighborhood students were not allowed to attend. You need to know a little of the history. But before that, I want to make two points. First of all, I teach at Lincoln High School now. I started teaching there when they reopened. For the life of me, I can't understand how you can build a school and spend $130 million to build that school, Lincoln High School, and then not be committed to protecting the enrollment and success of that school. Also, another point before I discuss some of the history. When students are from all over the city and they elect to come to a school in the neighborhood, that school, when they leave it at eighth grade, they go back to their own neighborhoods to go to high school. If you're an eighth grader and you finished Millennium Tech and you live in Claremont, you're not going to go to a high school at Lincoln. If you live in Miramesa and you finish eighth grade and it's time for you to go to high school, you're not going to Lincoln. That's why I want to state again, if you spent so much money to build that beautiful new Lincoln High School, why aren't you doing more to protect the enrollment? I want to go back and remind you, for 28 years, I was one of the teachers who taught at Gomper Secondary School. It was the math, science, and computer magnet school. I remember 17 busloads of students from all over San Diego coming to Gomper's. We won science fairs, everything. But there was one thing wrong. Students who lived right across the street from Gomper's, two blocks from Gomper's, students who could walk to Gomper's, well, they could attend Gomper's, but they could not be a part of the magnet. What happened? Resentment. You had a school within a school. The students did not associate. You had teachers who didn't want to teach the neighborhood kids. So, parents got involved. They picketed. They protested. They came to the Board of Education. And some of you remember, it got really ugly. So, they opened the school to neighborhood students. The students from all of the city.
Have to ask you to wrap up.
We developed all kinds of friendships. But you came to a point where people started to realize we had very, very motivated and intelligent students who only needed to be exposed to what was being offered at Gomper's.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you very much. And don't forget, Millennium is one of the perfect feeders for Lincoln High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Philip Liebert, and my address is on file. I want to thank the Board for allowing us to speak, and I want to express my appreciation for what the Board is doing. The plan to implement A-3G, that was a good step. The process that you used to pick the present superintendent, that was very open, and the community got a lot of input. So, that was another good step. And then, the process that you have now about community-based reform, that is also going in the right direction. As to the area superintendent, that is also a good idea. I think that that gives the students and parents and teachers a better way of getting in contact with someone in management. With regards to the present issue, Knox and MTM, Knox is definitely overdue for refurbish and rebuilding. And as you have heard tonight, the people really want the STEM program, so we have to find a way how to extend that at other schools. The location at MTM just is not large enough to support the desire of the people who want to go there. And lastly, we have to include sports and exercise and recreation on the campuses of both MTM and Knox. And that is also going to be a challenge because you also have an issue with space. So, thank you, and we hope that we can extend and improve the kind of programs that the student wants, and that seems to be science and engineering, math. Thank you.
My name is Leif Erikson. I'm a seventh grader at MTM, and my address is on file. MTM is important to me because it's the only school with STEM program in town that suits my needs. I want to be a computer engineer because I've always liked to build and create things. The school helps me with their robotics and Mesa programs so that I can pursue that career that I've always dreamed of. I really hope that you choose to vote for the 40-60 proposition because then the other younger kids than me who are in fourth and fifth grade that want to be able to build and want to be able to learn how to create things and learn the meaning of architecture can be able to go there when they go into sixth grade. Just before Thanksgiving, there was a meeting at Lincoln to vote for the future of MTM. They only gave us two days' notice and scheduled it on the same night as our previously noted for, I think, about two weeks, our family math night. Not many MTM families could vote or even come, so we gave them a chance to vote the following week. I have the results here, and there's results on that paper. As you can see, most of us don't want MTM to be changed.
My name's Claudia Erikson, and my address is on file. I'm a parent of a seventh grader you just heard. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. I know you have a big job on your hands tonight. There are several reasons why I think the proposal to change MTM's enrollment is not a good one. I know there's a middle school needed here. I understand that. I just don't think this is the one. There is the issue of space and safety, but I'm going to let someone else speak to that. I'm going to talk about the importance of keeping MTM as the dedicated magnet school that serves all of San Diego Unified Middle School students that are interested in STEM. There are several definitions of a magnet school, but they generally say the same thing. A magnet school offers specialized curriculum, often with high academic standards, to a student body representing a cross-section of the community. It's not just an average school, and let's make sure, as we make these changes, that the student body matches those characteristics that the interest matches. MTM's really new. It's only in its third year. Federal funding was obtained to start up the school that would service the San Diego area. Teachers with the STEM specialty were hired, equipment bought, and curriculum developed. MTM is doing what it was intended to do. It attracts students interested in STEM and, like most magnets, attracts a fair percentage of bright and gifted students, kids who need a school where they can be challenged above and beyond the norm and where it is okay to be smart and inquisitive. Our API is 787, one of the highest in the area. The teachers are a great match, and many took this teaching assignment because kids are appreciative, inspired, and want to be there. I hear that over and over again. I think many teachers will leave if this becomes a neighborhood school. It's just not what they signed on for. We keep hearing how STEM careers are the way of the future and that to compete in the global economy, we have to foster our future scientists, engineers, and inventors, doing this through good STEM education programs. I understand the district is facing massive budget cuts and issues like bringing kids back to their communities and busing kids to magnet schools are hot-button, and I agree with some of those. But I have to argue there should be exceptions. There should be at least one school that is meeting the needs of those future STEM leaders and innovators. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Erikson. Thank you very much. Okay, Zonies Jones, Lilly McMillan, Barry Pollard, Jackie Mieschak, and Levi Barnes? Levi Barnes? Yeah. Lou Barnes, sorry. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Lilly McMillan. I'm the principal at, and my address is on file. I'm the principal at Porter Elementary. You know, I came in and I had sat down and I jotted down some things to say tonight. And I had wanted to come from the perspective of a community member, not as an administrator in the district, because I live in the community that's being discussed here on tonight. Thank God, my children are all grown, and I call it grown and gone. But if they were at home and I was deciding where I wanted to send my children in my community, and listening to some of the comments that have been made about the parents in this community is just appalling. When you hear comments that the parents are not motivated, and when I have upwards to over 400 parents in attendance at our Principals List Award, when I have parents upwards to over 200 at attendance at our monthly award meetings at each grade level almost, if that's not motivated, I don't know what is. When I hear comments that our children are going to bring down the scores at the school, when I hear that the children are not dedicated, when I hear that the children are forced to come into the school, when I hear that, "When I come down from my community to come down to your community, I took a chance." I mean, that's hard language to really consider as a member of this community. I have, right here, signatures of my parents who can't get in their cars or walk down to the Board to state that they want the school to change to 70-30, but they put their names on this petition here or these banners saying that this is what they want. And I have not said anything on this matter. I left it to my parents. But as a parent right now, thank you.
And thank you to my ELSD and one of my teachers at my site.
Thank you. Jackie Mieschak, if you want to come up?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Mieschak, and my address is 303 South San Ascento, Valencia Park. And I'm not afraid. But I'll tell you one thing, most of you are new to the Board, and that's why I came, because some of you don't know me. And those that do are really glad to see me. I am a great-grandmother. My six children went to the schools in the community because years ago, there was a law that said two and two has to be four anywhere you go. But then I kept living, and I'm proud. I'm blessed. And I'm still upset about that teacher that said that we don't motivate, we don't care. And another lady said, "There are gangs over there." I watched the Bowery Boys, and they've had gangs a long time. And you can motivate them to be good people, and there are some teachers that said, "If you want them to learn math and engineering and all of that, first you have to give it to them, and then let them do a beat," you know, like music. And that's what I'm hurt about. You have to have a magnet or a charter to have music and have arts. My children went to Lincoln when people got along. That's what we have to start doing. I don't know, I'll keep living, and I'll either make you angry enough to come back and let's iron it out, or you'll just move up to the mountain and it's my turn is over already. And what I want to say to you, Jim Evans, John, I'm sorry, what I want is everybody to get elected, not just the Board, but the superintendent also.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, Barry Pollard or Zonies Jones?
I have the statement.
Uh, not really.
She just said I could.
You can't read a statement.
I can't read the statement?
Or somebody?
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
Lou Barnes?
Lou Barnes, name is on file. High school graduate of Lincoln High School, have a daughter, attending Lincoln High School, have a daughter attending MTM. There's a big concern. We're talking about a feeder for a program for Lincoln, and it's surprising that probably 100% or 75% of your speakers who are busing their kids in, they're not interested in going to Lincoln. So, MTM is not by design, the way the numbers are set, are not designed to help support Lincoln, which it should be. It's a local school. It's a community school. The kids in that community should have the opportunity to attend that school. Get rid of the 70-30, get rid of period. If a kid in that neighborhood wants to go to that school, they should be able to go to the school. I understand establishing the benefit for Johnson and Webster, I guess it was Webster, because that's the way it was established. But now, you've got all these kids in the area that want to go to a great school, but you tell them they can't go there. That's a problem. And I really have a problem when you talk about the four corners, because I lived on Solola, and I walked to Gomper's back and forth every day, never had no issues. So, that's a title that they've always, we love titling our area. And I'm sorry to get sensitive about this, but it's ridiculous. Those parents that bring their kids into the school, guarantee they ain't going to Lincoln. I bet you, if you check the record, they're not following themselves to Lincoln. We've got the potential, four high schools and a junior high school in the area that's performing where it ain't designed to feed the major two high schools. performing where it ain't designed to feed the major two high schools, just Lincoln and Morris. It's ridiculous. It's bad numbers, bad decision. So we encourage the board, excuse me, to rethink this, come up with a solution that is best fitted for the community. The kids in that community should have the opportunity to go to a great school. Why do you have kids getting on a bus from Point Loma or driving from Point Loma to southeast San Diego, then you got southeast San Diego going to Point Loma? Don't make no sense. Let's get on board, let's do what's best for this community, for these kids, let's provide a environment where all of our kids can thrive and be successful.
We've got Deborah Stevens, Kim Barnes, and Selena Scott.
My name is Deborah Stevens, and my address is on file. I spoke to this body previously regarding the issue that we're facing of Lincoln not having a feeder school. And although most of you may not have been here when the decision was made to allow Gompers to become a 12th grade school, I think that's a result of why we're sitting here. I think it's the decisions that were made that made this happen. So now we're back to a whole community arguing against each other. I've never seen this happen in any of our, any of our other districts. It always happens in this, in this district, and frankly, it's embarrassing. Our children should be able to go to the best schools, but I think there's misinformation out. I talked to the principal at MTM, and she's saying there's no students that have been turned away, no community students have been turned away from MTM. Well, if that's the case, why do so many speakers come up here saying the same thing? Where's this different information coming from? So I think you're, you're about to vote on an issue tonight where there needs to be more discussion. I think there are a larger group of people than what's represented here and at the last meeting that have input, and yes, they are not here, but I think the discussion needs to be opened up so that they can weigh in on the decisions that, that are going to be made and how they're going to impact our schools from here, from here on forward. Lincoln does need a feeder school. MTM provides a curriculum that those students are interested in, and if we've got other students coming up in the community that want to go to MTM, they should be allowed to go there. But we want to make sure that everyone is getting the same information, information of what's going forward. Thank you very much.
If you're, if you're ready to speak, please, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Selena Scott. I'm actually here just to briefly address keeping the STEM magnet intact for Johnson and MTM. I spoke previously to the board before in regards to the students at Johnson not being allowed into MTM, which is a whole nother thing. Thankfully, we got over that. I don't really want to touch too much on the 70-30 or the 40-60 or anything else because I'll become very emotional on that. But what I do want to say is that we don't need to cut the funding for the STEM for Johnson and MTM because our children are valuable. I brought in some boards. These boards are about three years old. These are from a science fair that my son and my daughter did at Johnson. My son is presently a seventh grader attending MTM. His aspirations in life are to become an engineer. My daughter a nurse. My son in the fourth grade was talking about whether bacteria would grow faster when exposed to vitamins. Okay? In fourth grade, this is a fourth grader at Johnson. We were a resident at that time. My first grader, who won first place in the science fair at Johnson, wanted to know if you could mix colors, and if you look at these boards, she doesn't just mix the colors, she uses light to show you the simulations of colors being mixed. This is the stuff that our resident magnet school is teaching our children. You know, people are very emotional about this, me being one of them. Because of the economy and because we have the difficulty of sustaining ourselves in that community, we had to leave California. We went to Nevada. The education was horrible. We came back. We are struggling, but we are here. I feel like we definitely need to leave, have MTM as a feeder for Lincoln. That is, that is necessary. But again, my main concern is keeping the STEM magnet intact for Johnson and MTM.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kim Barnes, and my address is also on file. Much of what I want to say tonight has been said, but I feel compelled to say it to you again. As a parent of a high-achieving seventh grader at Millennial Tech Middle School, I love the intimacy of that MTM campus and all that it has to offer for being a STEM, smaller middle school with 535 or so students. But as a 20-year veteran teacher at Johnson STEM Magnet School, all 20 of my years, or this is my 20th year, I've taught at that school. I've seen Johnson come from, I know where it's been, and I know where it is now, and I know where it's going. And it's a high-achieving school, we're over 800 now. I know the importance of having a high-achieving middle school that can receive our students and other students in the Emerald Hill area. My point, we have to do and will continue to do what is, what's well and what's right by our STEM students at Johnson, getting them well-prepared to articulate to another STEM-focused middle school. And to reiterate with Dr. Weber and with Michelle Bryant said, this school came into existence, I'm talking about MTM, it came into existence because our students at Johnson really, really needed a school that they can continue to articulate into the next level with. And we needed that district school. While we cultivated and polished our gems at Johnson, we needed them to continue to flourish at a middle school, and as such, MTM came into existence. My goal is ensure that all students wanting to get into MTM get into that school from the Emerald Hills area and around it, and the Webster area as well. Keep the STEM magnet funding, this is really, really important, please keep the STEM magnet funding in focus for Johnson and MTM. And I'm, I'm sorry. Also, our emotions and our concerns and our desires is to keep this school into function. Let's not think about what President Obama has said. It's also at the forefront of his mind to have a STEM focus for the middle schools, middle school, I mean, from all schools. And like a very special person once said to me, "Every flower needs watering." How will Lincoln, our community, flower blossom without watering? Where would the water and the nourishment come from? Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a, a motion in a second. I'm going to speak if it's all right with my colleagues.
Can we have a break?
No, no. We've got to, we've got to deal with this. We'll, we'll have a break after this. I, I want to thank everybody on both sides of this issue or on, there's a few, maybe a few different sides of this issue that have come out tonight. There's been powerful testimony, some of the most powerful testimony that I've had a chance to listen to as a, as a board member. This is, this is an issue that I know has been challenging for Ms. Jackson as, as a leader and as the representative of District D, who's been, you know, directly involved in this issue every day. It's been, you know, it's been challenging from my perspective as well because I've heard extremely well-meaning people who care about kids having a difficult time communicating, you know, over, over this issue. And what I've, what I've pushed for is that we have more communication over this issue, and I think one of our speakers talked about that at the end, because I've been hopeful that we could actually achieve some consensus where it didn't exist. But what I'm hearing tonight is that one of the reasons that it's important, I think, for people to keep communicating with each other and listening to each other is because sometimes we can't achieve consensus, and I believe this is one of those issues. And I think what's happening here is we've got two very powerful visions, but that are competing visions. One vision that I'm hearing from the Millennial Tech community is a powerful vision in support of a school and a school community that's clearly working well right now. And, and it's something that what I'm hearing from folks from the Millennial Tech community, you're committed to protecting and to preserving, and your question is, you know, why, why change something that we know is working right now? And I, I understand that, that message. And then I hear a competing vision from, from folks within the, within the community who are, who are saying, "We believe in a vision, but we believe that we need to change to get to that vision." And what we need to change to is, we need to be able to create a, a pattern of community-based schools, neighborhood-based schools, from elementary through middle through Lincoln that give the opportunity for a great education to all of our kids in our neighborhood, in our community, and that we have kids with exceptional talent and, and gifts in our neighborhood right now, and we need to, we need to nurture those gifts, and the best way to do that is through a, a series of community-based schools that are excellent and that, and that nurture those gifts and especially those gifts in the areas of science and technology and math and engineering. They're competing visions, and I understand it. And one of the reasons that I know Ms. Jackson has, has continued to push so hard on this issue is because she's clear that, that there are powerful visions here, but that we've got to make a decision. And because I, I now understand that much better, having heard this testimony, I'm going to support Ms. Jackson's motion, and I'm going to support Ms. Jackson's motion because when it comes to a question of creating, of creating, preserving a great school that works for, that's, that's open to everybody throughout the city, and we've got schools like that. MTM's one of them. The Language Academy is another one. SCPA is another one. It's important for our district to have great magnet schools that are available to every, every kid, no matter where they live. But it's also important, and I think I would say more important, that we first make sure that there's the opportunity for kids to go to great schools in the neighborhood in which they live. And when we, and when I have to choose between those competing priorities, I'm going to come down on the side of building great neighborhood schools. I believe it's within the, the capacity of the people who have created a great school, built a great school at MTM, to continue and build an even better school with more kids coming from the Lincoln Cluster. And I absolutely believe in the, in the capacity of kids within the Lincoln Cluster to take advantage of a great school at Millennial Tech and to, and to move forward and to do great things in their lives. So because of that and, and my appreciation for Ms. Jackson's leadership on this issue, I'm going to support the motion. Dr. Evans?
Thank you. One of the things that we have tried to do in terms of our community-based reform is have a lot of community involvement, and this is very sloppy, because when you ask the community to speak up, this community doesn't always speak in one voice, and we have to listen to a lot of different voices. And it isn't as simple as a computerized voting process where we have every, every possible stakeholder directly involved. But this is still, I believe, is the best way to do it, and, and as Mr. Brera said, I really do appreciate the testimony of the people who have come here tonight, because I think, as he said, this is really a tribute to the fact that these are open meetings. We do not come here with our minds completely made up and everything decided and just going through the motions, but we really are listening to the community and trying to come up with the, the best possible solutions. I certainly, I really appreciate what, what both Dr. Weber and Pat Washington were saying in terms of the importance of, of the neighborhood schools. We have really tried, since I've been on the board, to emphasize this in two, in two ways. One, in terms of children having, every child having a good school in their own neighborhood. There are certainly reasons for children to, to attend a special school that meets their needs in another neighborhood, but I haven't liked it when we've had situations where children attend another school in, in another neighborhood because they don't consider the one in their own neighborhood adequate, or in other cases, even worse, that is not necessarily even available. The other part of the neighborhood schools that we've really emphasized is really the continuity from, from kindergarten to graduation. We've just had too much disjointed, go to elementary school here, go to middle school over here, and then maybe go to high school here, back and forth. I've even seen within, within the same neighborhood where the, the elementary and the middle and the high schools were not even communicating with each other, and we need to all be working from, from the very beginning to the end, and that's what we've tried to set up with the whole cluster model. And when we set the cluster model, we also opened up another Pandora's Box, because then Ms. Jackson said, "Well, if we're talking about clusters, that means elementary and middle schools and high schools," and guess what? I've got, I've got this hole, hole in my neighborhood. There's another, and, and just when people are talking about this, the idea that there would be any school anywhere with kind of a high fence and sort of a keep-out sign to anybody who happened to live in the neighborhood is, is really, really an appalling thought. There's one other concept which, which is important here, too. We've seen lots of changes through the years in districts and why we have magnets and why we have busing or why we don't, and when we change superintendents and what the focus is and all that type of thing. And sometimes when we make changes, we, we throw out the baby with the bathwater, or sometimes we have some parts that are working good, but we say, "Here's a new way to do it, so let's, let's completely redo it." And so that's why I want us to be really, really careful in this change. We have some things that are working really, really well at Millennial Tech. It's, it's everything I've heard. It's, it's a great school. The parents, students, teachers, so enthusiastic about that, and, and we do not want to lose that by doing this in a clumsy sort of way. But now, one, one question I have, and maybe someone on the board can answer this for me, is we're talking about 70-30, 40-20-20, and all of these different sorts of percentages. I understand there was one concept, one concept here, which is, is Johnson has this very specific focus, and so for the articulation of, it makes sense in terms of the articulation of those students into the, into the, the middle school. But I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, it makes sense to me that neighborhood kids who are interested in the STEM magnet program should have priority. And I guess I'm not sure about the 30-70, 20-40, 20-20-20, because if it comes out that 10% of the neighborhood kids are interested in, in this magnet and, and 90% of the kids come from outside, or the reverse, 90% are from the neighborhood and 10% from outside, as long as they are the students, because the school has been successful with this focus, they are the students that want to be there for that focus. So I guess I'm not clear why we're even, even limiting it to, or how we come up with this 30-70 or this 70-30. Shouldn't it just be that it's open to students who want to attend a STEM magnet, and first priority is given to all of the neighborhood students? I mean, and, and if Ms. Jackson could address that, because I know you've been involved in this, is maybe there's something I'm missing about the percentages.
Well, I have to, I have to camera company and address that. Doctor Cameron, can you address that particular issue? I think in the earlier conversations, you can come forward, because I'm not remembering all of it. all of this. The first conversations around the middle school, MTM, was around magnet. And the Magnet Office and Dr. Campbell's staff had several meetings to talk about what constitutes a magnet and what doesn't. And I think that's how we had to have the numbers, because if you just, if it's just open, you can explain it, but I know they had conversations around it, which means we had to get to some point where we have some kind of numbers to determine whether it's magnet or dedicated magnet.
The reason why it's important to have 70% to 30% is because with the enrollment option process, it's where parents will apply with an application. They start in November 1st and they end February something. I'm not sure of the date. What happens during that period of time is some recruitment going on, but not widespread enough that it really extends to the Lincoln resident students. And they submit applications late, and they're denied. There is a waiting list that forms with those who submit application forms late. There are some that even submitted applications on time and didn't get in. So we need to be able to look at 70% first, then the next cluster, then the next cluster, then the next cluster. In the case that we don't get 70%, and I think that's where you're headed, it's the same thing what they do already. They go by cluster first, and then the next cluster, and then the next cluster.
Let me just ask, I mean, I'm even thinking if there are more than 70% of the neighborhood students who are interested in this particular focus and want to attend that school, is there some reason that would eliminate it as a magnet if it went above 70%?
No.
If it was like 80% or just as an example?
No. The difference is the dedicated magnet, and I think there's a handout in your packet there. The dedicated magnet has the percentage where you would have 40, 30, or 30. When you want to increase it for more resident students, it has to become a resident magnet. And that's how you get more students into the magnet program.
And let's say it's called, or classified as a resident, excuse me, a resident magnet or a dedicated magnet. If the school is working on this focus and this theme, what difference, is there a change in funding or?
No difference in the focus. It can remain STEM. And no difference in the funding. It remains TIG. It's just a matter of the enrollment.
So it's strictly, it's sort of an arbitrary thing. If you say it's a dedicated magnet, it's this percentage. And if it's a residential magnet, it's this percentage. But, so I'm still coming back to if it's open to students from all over, but with first priority to, you know, filling the seats with neighborhood students, including up to the entire school, why is that not possible?
Let me answer that question. That is possible. What happens is, as you're going through the process, as the paperwork comes in, and the choice office may start filling in seats, and then they get toward the back, because again, this process is from one November to February 15. And so what happens then is that they may have filled a number of seats and then realize, "Oops, I have some Lincoln students here, and those students can't get in now because they've already filled those seats." So that's the reason for giving, so you're saying give priority to those students. If they don't have those students right up front, then they can't give priority to those students. And so that's one of the things that happens, when you mentioned about the delay in the process coming in and that type of thing.
So, I mean, I understand that one problem could be a problem in the whole recruitment process. The other could be that people are moving into the neighborhood at a later date and didn't have a chance to participate.
Carolyn, do you want to? Yes, thank you.
Sure.
No, thank you.
So I've been listening.
Thank you.
Basically, what happens is a dedicated magnet, it has percentages that it takes from all over, from three different clusters that are made up of magnet geographic clusters. Once you become a resident magnet, that means every child from a resident, from the resident area, whatever that resident area is, what that boundary is, can be enrolled in that school first, no matter what.
Right.
So it can go up to 99% resident students with 1% being from outside the area.
Okay.
Now, what happens is when we're in a budget crisis and things like that, then we start looking, okay, is it a successful magnet school? Because remember, we have four characteristics for a magnet school. It not only has to have academic success, but it has to have that diversity piece. So then we start looking at the diversity and deciding, did we get that from the resident area or not?
Okay, but the basic point of a residential magnet is that the neighborhood kids have
Priorities.
Priority to go in.
Absolutely.
For example, for Spreckles, which is a bilingual magnet, first of all, anyone who lives in the neighborhood can go there, and then however many spaces are left, which in that case is many, in the other case I'm talking about.
Exactly.
It can be filled. Okay, then that's clear.
Now, what will be decided also will be, with a resident magnet, we always leave a couple of seats once that priority application period happens. So we try to make sure that all the resident kids get in. Then we go through our priority enrollment through the 15th. What we will have is, as we heard from Johnson this evening, and I saw in the PowerPoint, within our, what's always part of our enrollment procedures for magnet schools, is that your continuity, theme continuity always gets priority into the school. So first would be resident, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, so if it's a residential magnet, basically, you can, the people who are there can attend, and anybody else that wants is added on after that.
As long as they apply. So then it's resident, then Johnson and Webster. And then we would start in with our different clusters, magnet clusters.
And as far as resident, also means that if a person lives in the neighborhood of a residential magnet and they don't like that theme, they have the right to go elsewhere.
Absolutely.
Because they're not, because they don't, in that sense, have their neighborhood rights.
A point of clarification. It's not just Johnson and Webster. It would be the elementary schools that would like to apply. And I can say, it's kind of disappointing, and maybe it's because it's not known, there's a lot of STEM work being done in Area 1. And it's not just in Johnson and Webster. And I think we're not giving enough recognition to all the schools in terms of their preparation for kids.
And Mr. Burnett had a?
I had some questions for you, ma'am, and possibly Ms. Meyer. Well, first of all, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and there's a lot of emotion. Unfortunately, there was a lot of divisiveness here as well, but that's the process we have. And there was a lot of, probably a certain amount of disrespect for various neighborhoods. And that's unfortunate, because San Diego is known for its neighborhoods. When people say, "Where do you live?", they don't say, "Live in San Diego." They live in Normal Heights or University City or La Jolla or wherever. And that's what we are, a community of neighborhoods. And I think we should respect that. But just to make sure I'm clear, right now, if any student, resident student, wants to go to MTM, can they do that?
Every student, right now, that, every student applies to MTM. If they apply during the priority application deadline, they were enrolled into MTM. To the point that we have 19 students that were enrolled that were out-of-district students, because we had that much room to add students beyond our district's school students to attend millennial tech this year. Then what happens is then we have late people who applied later. And as that happened, then the school began to fill up. While we were hoping to take 600 students, and there are people who know this better than I for the actual capacity of the school right now, but we could only go to 525 students this year.
Is the timeline, November 1st to February?
Through February 15th.
Is that set by us or the state or?
No, that's set by us as a district, as the priority application deadline.
Okay. And there were comments made tonight that there have been residents within that area who have been turned down, and is?
Yes, and that did happen on the day school started. I was there assisting with transportation and kids and everything else. And basically, what did happen was there was a student who thought that they were going to walk into the school, and the problem was, was every seat was filled. That child had also chosen another school and had been accepted to that school, and I assisted them in getting to that school. Later, it turned out that that parent and that student did make inquiries as to how they could attend millennial tech.
So I guess I'm not clear, because there's the staff recommendation, and then there's the recommendation from Ms. Jackson, which is the motion on the floor. And there, the staff is recommending that it increase enrollment by 100, but that we reevaluate the dedicated versus resident magnet. What is that? And you're saying give priority Lincoln feeder elementary students. Aren't we already giving priority to Lincoln elementary feeder students, or kind of, sort of, not really?
Not really, well, no, not really.
Okay.
Not really.
So if it was made a resident magnet, then the priority would be to resident students?
Yes.
Would there be additional, well, how do we know, then, that the recruitment is actually aggressive, or how they're recruiting, or what are our recruitment guidelines to make sure that it's effective, it's monitored, it's followed through?
Well, that's what's next, is once a decision is made, we'll know if we're advertising as a dedicated magnet or a resident magnet. We target different communities, depending on what we're looking for, for magnet schools. So it depends on what's happening. And yes, we always, when it comes to the Lincoln Cluster, yes, we always make sure that we are actively recruiting from the local area, to the point that we're very proud that this is even, I mean, you have to be kind of, see millennial tech as a success that we're even standing here tonight.
Okay. I had a few more questions, and forgive me for interrupting, because I know there's, we've been here a long time. Number one, it's clear that there's a lot of interest in STEM throughout the district and even beyond. I see there's some 37 kids who come from outside of San Diego United and bring their ADA to MTM. You know, it seems to me that if we had this to be a resident magnet, then I don't understand the need for the percentage. And I don't, right now, I guess 55% are, according to, are residents, but if it's a resident magnet, priority has to be given, and we make sure that there's clear, aggressive recruitment oversight, then, and I don't understand the need for the percentage. And also, I'm a little confused by the process where you have a staff recommendation, but a staff member who works for you has a different recommendation. And is that your recommendation, or is that her recommendation? I mean, I don't quite understand how that works as well.
I don't.
But I guess on the basic issue, though, what is, if we're a resident magnet, then doesn't that solve the problem?
Yes.
So without, so why do we need a percentage on top of that? I guess I'll ask Ms. Jackson.
I can just state that the difference between these two recommendations is the percentage.
So that's the only difference?
Correct.
So why do we need the percentage, which is arbitrary?
When you look at the dedicated magnet, I think Carolyn even indicated, they target specific schools based on the clusters. And when you don't have a dedicated magnet, it's a resident magnet, then they will target all of the Lincoln resident schools. And they don't do that at this point. So that's the reason why a percentage, because then if it is?
Let me interrupt you. That doesn't make sense, because you said, "Right now, if it's a dedicated magnet, they don't target all the schools."
They don't.
If it's a resident magnet, you say they will target more schools.
All the schools.
All the schools. So then why do you need the percentage?
I was about to finish my statement. Because when you target all the schools, then there's a guarantee that they're looking for 70%. What happens is if they don't go to those schools and target those schools to get those 70% of students, they'll start looking at the other percentage or other clusters to get the students to backfill those positions. So we need an aggressive recruitment kind of process that's going to target all of Lincoln residential students with a guarantee that we're really trying to go for 70%. And that's not happening right now.
Why 70%?
Because...
Why not 80? Why not 65? Why not 90? Why 70?
Because we do want to balance. We appreciate what's going on at MTM. We want diversity. We want outside residential students to learn together, work together. So we're not trying to be exclusive. We're trying to be inclusive, but we're trying to broaden the perspective and expand the opportunity for Lincoln resident students.
Okay. I don't, I support the part of the, I mean, I'm second to the motion for discussion purposes after hearing, listening to all the discussion and all. I will either withdraw my second or vote against the motion. I don't believe, I would support a motion to create a resident magnet and maybe have staff come back with very aggressive outreach and monitoring of that and so forth, but I don't see the benefit in the percentage, and I would not want to support the motion on the floor for that purpose.
Okay. I'll speak and try and close this out, because this has been a long meeting. First, I want to say thank you to everyone that came to speak tonight, and this has been a very long, long process. And it has its ups and downs, too. And sure, just give me three minutes. I might get carried away here, and I don't want to go too long. So give me like three minutes, so that I won't go too long. The people that live in the Lincoln Cluster have been asking for well over a year or so, for a very long time, for a middle school, and trying to find options for that. There have been several, it's 10 listed in our binder of community meetings discussing a middle school for Lincoln. And there have been good attendance at some, spousal attendance at others. But before I go, let me go back to MTM. For the new, for the new people here on the board, the question was the difference between what we have here and what we got to the final. This was the first thing that came, submitted to Board Docs on December 2nd, the original, and then there was a change throughout the routing through the staff. Sometimes when those changes occur, it causes more problems than need to be happening. When MTM was brought before us, and you heard Johnson's parents speak, this audit room was filled, because at that time, a staff member had decided to move MTM over to Memorial, because Memorial was saying, "We want a public school. We want our own school. You just built Lincoln, give us MTM." After much discussion and three heated board meetings, having people fighting against each other in southeast and southern part of our school district, the staff came back with a great recommendation that we would put MTM where it is, and we would make Memorial a public school and give it the proper respect and things that it should have, which we have done. Okay? At that time, the understanding was that Johnson's parents had came and fought, and I think maybe Webster came, but both Johnson and Webster parents are very steep in science. But what has happened was that because of the popularity of MTM initially, there were people from other areas coming in, and then some of the people from Johnson and Webster could not get into that school. And they came back again, because they're the ones that were down here fighting to get that school into the community, just before any principal appointments, any staff people were selected. So now we move to the point of what we need in our community, and I think Mr. Barrera spoke to it earlier, about the community-based schooling and a feeder pattern for Lincoln. While I'm happy that the Magnet Office has had three or four meetings around this to come to this happy medium, and it wasn't a medium where it was still the way it is or it was totally open, it came back to the 70-30. So it wasn't all or nothing, which is how I got back to the 70-30. The facility staff had had more than 10 meetings to look at how they can accommodate students over at MTM. The transition plan does not immediately start tomorrow, we're not kicking kids out tomorrow. Transition plan is built over a number of years to make sure that the growth of MTM happens in a systematic way, so it's not haphazard. So there has been a lot of meetings, a lot of, thank you. And I think, but the point is that I think it's time for us to take action and move forward, so the community can come together and heal, and then those two groups can come together and plan what's best for the community, so we can move forward. So with that, Mr. Barrera, I'll call for the question.
Actually, I withdraw my second of the motion.
Withdraw your second. Okay, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, just a really quick comment. I mean, I certainly understand your concerns about the percentage. I mean, the way I'm looking at it is sort of an analogy would be in terms of hiring goals or something like that. It's not that the percentages will actually come out there, but it's to make sure that there's a dedicated recruiting, using dedicated, there's a strong recruiting effort to convert it to a residential magnet.
Okay.
So that's, for that reason, I suppose.
We've got a motion in a second, please vote. Okay, that motion passes three to one. Now we'll take a five-minute break. Thanks, Mr. Burnett. Thanks, Mr. Barrera.
Okay. Who's first tonight at the restroom?
......
study, the answer is not always, and that's especially true for schools in low-income areas.
Rory Devine took a look at what the report means for schools in San Diego County and joins us now with some perspective.
Well, since it's a mark, I have to tell you that for years now, when the words, when we mentioned them, emergency credentials, those words made parents cringe. It meant that teachers were teaching subjects they did not have a credential to teach nor do they have a college major in the field. It was especially problematic in the fields of math and science, but despite the national study, there is good news here in San Diego County.
Pretend that that's not even there and you get this first inequality.
An algebra class at Clermont High.
Then if you pretend this part's not here, you get the second inequality.
A third-year teacher, Crystal Davis, has a credential that qualifies her to teach math.
Cannot take it in math. It's a black or white area. There is no gray area. You're either right or you're wrong.
But according to the study, the nation's students in high-poverty schools are still disproportionately taught by out-of-field and inexperienced rookie teachers in English, science, history, and especially math.
The case is different here in San Diego County.
David Brashear is with the County Office of Education, charged with monitoring teacher assignments.
Then you solve each one separately.
Monitoring that became more scrutinized, he says, after a 2004 state lawsuit settlement to ensure equity among schools. He says during the last school year, with more than 120 schools monitored, the number of out-of-field teachers, zero.
It's been a slow process, but actually in San Diego County, we've, it's, it's never been as bad as what's often reported elsewhere across the country.
Why is that? Ms. Davis went to San Diego State. Brashear says a great teacher's college in a city like San Diego could be part of the reason.
I know the pool for any opening and right now, there are always hundreds of applicants. So districts have a chance to draw from the best applicants, the most qualified.
Any questions before we move on to today's lesson?
Just one question. What about those emergency credentials? Well, Brashear says California stopped issuing them two years ago in response to a plan it had to submit to the federal government to meet teacher qualifications. That national study was done by the advocacy group, The Education Trust. Reporting, I'm Maury Devine, NBC 739.
Thank you, Ms. Codish.
Mary Ann, can you believe it's just one week till Thanksgiving? A week from today?
I can't, Jason. Imagine that. But these kids, they got an early start. Some culinary students from Gargville High School got into the spirit very early, the culinary arts class, the 13th Annual Thanksgiving, gourmet luncheon with turkey and all the trimmings yesterday at the Prado in Bellboa Park. That's awesome. The students also provided boxed meals for the homeless throughout the city.
That's great. The event is also a fundraiser for the school and it teaches the students about food preparation and serving.
That's fantastic. Love it.
Good morning, San Diego.
Welcome back and we are continuing our special report on San Diego schools. What grade do they deserve?
Yeah. And should parents and students expect more from their public schools? We just heard from Scott Himmelstein and we want to hear now from Superintendent Bill Koba. And he has been taking a look at these numbers. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
All right. Well, we just went down these numbers and some of them are pretty surprising in terms of, I mean, I think just the demographic breakdown, when you just start there and you see that whites are 25% and basically, you know, white people are the minority now in San Diego schools.
That's right. Over the last three to four decades, we've seen a significant shift in demographics. And today, our white Caucasian student is clearly a minority. And this is representative of large urbans in California in general. We are not unique or different in that regard. There is a shift in ethnic groups between the suburbs, center city, and the rural areas.
What's your take on the San Diego Unified School District's proficiency in English numbers that we just looked at?
Well, I think that you saw a one-year snapshot. If you go back over the last five years, '06 to the present, they would show you not only in English language arts, but in math and in science that we've had steady growth. Not significant or spectacular, but steady growth. And I would say that that discussion would be representative of the other 42 school districts in the county and across the state. When you begin with proficiency level in 40% range or 42% range and you're pushing beyond 50%, that means you're doing something right, but you're not doing it as fast as you should. We are concerned about achievement gaps and that is the disparity between the proficiency levels of our African-American and our Hispanic kids and our Asian and Caucasian kids. I chair the County Achievement Gap Council for the superintendents. We, as a group across the county, have been taking a look, a real hard look at why there are those ethnic disparities. 25, 30-point differentials between Hispanic and African-American and white and Asian kids. We've become very strategic in our focus. We've looked at intervention strategies. In my own district in San Unified, we have partnered with the Association of African-American Educators, taken aboard something called the Blueprint for Accelerating the Academic Excellence of African kids and African-American kids. We've built a task force to take a look at gender differences, parent engagement, test scores, policies, to get at why they are improving, but slower than they should be. And we're doing something similar and looking at how we overcome the deficiencies in English language learners.
And obviously, the challenge is great when you're dealing, I think also with low-income folks. I mean, we're not just talking about ethnic minorities, you know, African...
Almost two-thirds of our kids qualify free and reduced lunch. That means they are at an economic indicator level below a certain point in time.
And how much is that? I mean, to me, the economic issue plays in more heavily than anything. It appears to be the prevailing issue in terms of the low test scores, whether it's Hispanic, African-American...
Right.
...or whites. It has to do with income and whether the parents have any resources to be able to help them out at home...
That's right.
...or in any way at all.
That's right. When you couple English language learning barriers with low economic income capabilities, you have very challenging households and kids that need a lot of attention. Part of our community reform is all about a pillar called parent engagement. Bringing the parents in, trying to involve them in developing learning plans for their children and honoring their presence on our campuses.
And how do we rank among larger school districts, particularly in California?
Well, when you compare us with about a dozen or so large urbans, LA, San Francisco, Long Beach, we are tied with San Francisco today with the 56 percentile of proficiency in English language. We're number one in science today and we're third in math. So when you compare us...
Out of the big districts.
Out of the big districts.
Yeah. And these are, this is what you're comparing us to.
And the California average, as you said, is 52. We're, we're well, we're above that.
That's correct. Yes. And when you, in context...
But that's not good.
That's not good and that's why I said our achievement gap focus is on reducing the differentials between ethnic groups. We're doing well compared to large urbans. We're doing well in the county, but that's not good enough. That's the message to the community. We have to do better.
Right. So what does the school board do in terms of resources, in terms of focusing your resources on the people who are having the biggest problems? Does this mean now you shift some resources to those groups and in those areas?
We have been adjusting those resources for a period of time. I think now it's about stabilizing and synchronizing our tactics. We have a math task force this year. We didn't talk about math much in this discussion, but math is almost as critical as English language and has less success for us. We have a math task force. We have an attendance focus. You have to have children and seats to learn. And we have two back-to-back months where we have achieved five-year highs with kids in class, emphasis on math, emphasis on English language arts, and trying to reduce those achievement gaps.
And how can we be sure that the teachers that are leading these kids are qualified and they're, they're doing their jobs?
Well, I think we have, in building our campus reform, tried to create a stronger team.
No, this is for next year. What you were asking for is that they give us a transitional plan for next year. That's not there.
What I'm recommending is, you know, the basically David Page's recommendation for next year, but then five years from now, we get to the increased threshold and the transitional...
So that conversation, is that going to be tonight?
I think we're doing it right now.
Oh, what are you saying? Right in here? Okay. It's going to be a separate motion.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, let's get moving again. If everybody could come up.
Caliphate was concerned about the cheerleaders staying up late.
Oh, okay. We'll move that.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. That's great.
Okay. I'll ask the, I'll ask the board's indulgence to move directly to item E5 because I know we have some students here. Yeah. So this is the course options for high school physical education.
I move to approve.
Okay. We've got a motion to approve in a second. We have two speakers, Cassidy Porter and Jamie Zabo.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name's Cassidy Porter and I'm here to support the vote for cheer as a PE credit, not opposed.
Okay.
And I've already earned my two years of PE credit, so reinstating the credit will not help me, but I do know how hard our conditioning is and preparing for the football games and the basketball games. And I want to be an advocate for those girls who, or boys, who do come after me. As cheerleaders, we work hard and we strengthen and we condition and learn cheer, stunts and like a lot of conditioning. And during basketball season, we cheer for both boys and girls like right after each other. And for everyone, or for people to tell us that what we do is not worthy of a PE credit, it's disheartening, especially when neighboring schools do get it. Giving us the credit costs, costs the board nothing and makes us work harder because we need to keep our grade up to qualify for our sport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Zabo, my address is on file. I'm here as well to support PE credit for cheer. I think we need to make this as simple and logical as possible. We have two groups of kids. We have the first group, which are physical, active, involved, engaged students. These girls and all the other CIF sports work a minimum 1,000 to 1,200 minutes in 10 school days. The guidelines require 400 minutes of physical activity in those same 10 school days. As Cassidy mentioned, they do football. We practice three times a week, two and a half hours of practice, four hours at a game. That includes stunting, tumbling, gymnastics, aerobics, fitness. They have to lift 100-pound girl up three to four times per quarter, throw her in the air, and catch her. If that doesn't require strength, fitness, and training, I'm not sure what other sport The high school course study continually mentions physical activity, intermediate dance, dual and individual sports, gymnastics and tumbling, aerobic activity, strength and fitness training. There is no other activity at this school that encompasses everything but cheer does. Cheer does all of those eight. The guidelines also, I mentioned about the minutes. At the last meeting, at the December meeting, a middle school PE teacher came up here and said, no offense to these physically fit girls, but at age 50, will they be doing flips? They won't be doing flips at age 50. They will be walking, they will be running, they will be working out at a gym. Their physicality will continue throughout their lives. They will teach their children the responsibilities and the importance of nutrition, body mechanics, fitness. And ultimately, isn't that the goal? Is to further the education in our smaller children. All I'm asking is that we be fair here. I agree, PE should be given to every physical activity that meets the minimum requirements and that includes CIF sports. It's just the right thing to do. These kids deserve the PE credit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I believe it was actually age 40 was the definition for old age and I was, you know, personally, kind of... Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I had one question.
Yes.
I obviously support the motion, second it, but there are certain requirements at certain times of year where kids have to have certain activities to show that they're proficient in. Are those still required under then these activities?
Yes, they would still need to take the ninth-grade fitness grad.
That's what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Great. And we won't even ask Catherine Nakamura to do a cartwheel. Good to see you. Okay, please vote. All right. That passes 4-0. Good job.
Didn't get a cheer?
You just, you just, you just got one. All right. All right. Homework, yeah.
Cat in the ear.
What are we spelling here? All right. Okay. Let's move on.
I might get that reaction for every vote tonight.
Okay. On to item E3. So this is our Title I eligibility ranking. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Barrera. We have Ron Rody, our CFO and Ron, I mean, see, Ron Rody, our Chief Committee Officer and Ron Little, our Chief Financial Officer, who are here working together to, I think what we want to do tonight, this is supposed to be a decision, and focus on the options. I think there have been two efforts to try and give you some background information.
Let me, let me see if I can move this along.
Sure.
I'm going to make a motion. And the motion is that for the 2011-12 year, the coming year, we take, I forget which category it was, but it was the, I think the recommendation that for each 1% decrease, we go down $6 per student.
The sliding scale, right?
Sliding scale. That we approve that allocation for the 2011-12 year, but that within five years, we move to a 75% threshold and that by the middle of January, or that, let's say the second board meeting in January, we ask the superintendent to come back to us with a plan about the best way to make that transition over a five-year period. So that is my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And just adding on that the superintendent would come up with a plan and that all of the schools would be clearly notified very soon so that they can, and obviously it would include some sort of grandfathering, gradual transition and so forth, you know, for one or two years when they fall out of a category. But so that, because the whole point is when we discuss this, it gets, we're always postponing it. So if they know in January what's going to happen in 18 months.
Okay. So we've got a motion in a second. We've got one speaker, David Page. David?
My first comments go to the violation of the district procedure 9062 that requires this board to submit a proposal to the DAC for 60-day consideration before making any changes in how compensatory education is done. This proposal is significant in its effect on the students of the district who bring Title I dollars to the district. And our DAC was only allowed because of the shortness of time to have a vote on philosophies about spending levels and they disagreed with this particular motion. Secondly, we didn't have time to have an action item on our agenda. It is on the agenda for tomorrow, but it would be for no effect. So the initial action of this new board is to violate district procedure regarding parent involvement. That's why we need a change in district governance. If you're going to continue with this vote, we will file a complaint responding to that because your, your efforts are not to maintain some status quo, they're drastically different. I'd like to draw attention though, in this report, to a few items on the, on the agenda item. I took your document and put it into a single piece to help show what that looks like. And these white gaps you see here are the students that will be unserved when we move to 75%. One of the things that I'd like to initially start with is looking at the category under column C. Does everybody have this document? If you were to take a marker and highlight in the 75% and higher category, the board member areas that are with those school sites, you'll find that the majority of schools that are affected with keeping their funds are district areas D and E. So we have two board members who will have their Title I allocations doubled through this effort. this effort. And for the three other board members that sit here or are absent, um, when you take the 74 percentile and lower and highlight those, um, board areas, you'll see that they are the ones that are impacted. So what we're asking for, or what will happen here at today's meeting with one member missing, is the board members will be voting to either keep Title I schools in their areas or lose them, because as you'll see, there are very few of their Title I schools that will remain in Dr. Evans' area, in Scott Burnett's area, or Kevin Beiser's area. So you have to ask yourself, why would board members voluntarily remove services for what amounts to, um, I want you to look at the very bottom of the document, last page, page four of four. What you have there is a compilation of all of these students. The district serves 116,000 students. It says 72,000 of those students on that bottom column are Title I students. Currently, we service 68,000 of those students. I want to suggest that that number's incorrect, and here's why. This district operates school-wide programming, meaning that in a school that has 40% Title I students, they actually service 100% of those students that are, that are at that school. So more students will be affected by the loss of that Title I money than just the Title I students out of 40%, 50%, 60% school. So the total down here isn't quite accurate, but you can easily see, uh, what will happen. I did my own, uh, tabulation. In the elementary level, you'll eliminate 22,000 students from services of Title I. At the middle school level, 10,000 students, and at the high schools level, 23,750 students will be removed from Title I services, uh, in those three areas, um, noted, when you take that to 75%. The question then comes to, why would three board members approve the removal of services to their schools?
And that... We're gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, David.
Actually, that same, um, board procedure allows me to make a presentation from the DAC.
David, you've exceeded your time limit. You can wrap it up.
Um, Mr. President, um, I have a question about your motion. Um, the first part of the motion, which scenario were you urging us to approve? Is it...
Sliding scale.
Sliding scale.
Sliding scale.
Okay. And that would be for the current, or the proposed fiscal year?
For the proposed 2011-12 year, yes.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, I, I can support the motion, but I just want to clarify, uh, something. If that's the way the budget's gonna be developed, which is fine, why do we need to have, I think we need, I would like to have more time than January for us to look at a five-year, um, phase-in plan. I'd like to have the DAC review, I'd like to have other parents who are potentially gonna...
I'm happy with that.
So I think as long as it's by, well, in theory, we don't need it for a year, but by, say, June, you know, by the approval of the budget, so we have six months to say, how is this gonna work? Also, I'd like you, including the staff doing that, um, performance measures to look at, can we monitor the impact of these additional funds?
Right.
Um, and, and how the existing funds have been used. And there's a lot of questions I still have on carryover, on how some of the, uh, you know, there's $2.6 million right now, uh, being spent, um, that are already, in addition to the numbers on this chart, that are not shown in this chart, based on the memo we got on December 10th. Where is that going? Is that, so, there's a lot of questions that I'd like to, to take the next few months to dig into, so if you would just...
I can certainly support that, so do we want to maybe extend it to the end of the, uh, end of June, uh, to come back with a transition plan?
Right. And include a community involvement and the DAC, and, and, and give us a chance to have staff come back and review all these questions, because there's a lot of questions, you know, on the, on the management dollars. I don't think we've gotten the report back yet on that request of where we spend the $6 million of management beyond the general categories. So I think, I'd like to get into those, but it doesn't preclude your basic motion.
Right. Which was, I was gonna comment on, I think that all we're doing tonight is taking action on to how the funding would go to the school sites. We're not taking, we're not taking...
Not for five years.
You know, the, the, the motion, as I understood it, was that we are taking action for the 11-12 school year, and then we would, in January, come back with a plan as how we want to transition it over the next five years. Is that what...
That was the motion, and I'm asking that we extend that, we're giving more time to, for, for at least this, the end of this fiscal year, so we can get more input, including from the DAC, from staff, and answer a lot of these questions that we've talked about.
And just, I mean, and one further clarification, because I think we're, we're basically looking at increasing the threshold so that the dollars can be concentrated and do the most good. Um, one, you know, 75% is, is a number that the federal government uses for high poverty, and, and the issue right now in, in our district, I believe, is about, oh, district-wide, is about 66%. So, so we're really looking at, you know, when schools are at lower numbers than that, they're actually below average in comparison to the, you know, so even if we're looking at above average right now, that would be 66%, which even gets close to the, the 75 anyway. But the only action I agree with in this action that we're taking is approving the formula for next year, but not getting in the situation for next year, because we're saying before this fiscal year closes out, the superintendent will have presented the plan, it will be reviewed and vetted by the DAC, we will understand what we're getting for the, for the money that's being spent, and it will be approved before June 30th.
I just, I just do want to clarify, though, that, um, the motion that I'm making, I'm, I'm fine with the extension of the plan, and obviously the questions that Mr. Burnett and Dr. Evans are raising, that need to be addressed in the plan, but we are making a commitment that within, by taking this vote tonight, we're making a commitment that within five years, we hit the 75% threshold. So it's not a plan, I'm not, the motion is not to approve the allocation for 11-12, and then have a plan come back to us, um, that we would then decide, you know, do we get to the 75% threshold? The motion is to make a commitment within five years to get to the 75% threshold, and we want a plan to come back to us to show us how that, how that would happen.
Well, my, the difference for me would be, I am not sure exactly when, when the district looks at how the funds are being used and what's effective, if that would come out exactly at the 75% point. So I, I, I wouldn't support that, I would support, um, the, the general concept of it being above, uh, it would, the threshold being above the district average, whatever the district average is at that point. So, but I understand, that's the motion.
Mr. Little, did you... I, I just wanted to ask the board to, in terms of the motion respectfully, the staff requests that we also fund the three schools, uh, for next year that fell below the 40%. That was part of the staff's recommendation, if possible.
I'll include that in my, my motion.
Did you hear what he said? Fund the schools?
It's three schools.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor, um, with a, with a second. Can we please vote on...
I amended it for the, uh, the understating.
Yes, yeah, that's right. Yep, okay.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we, that passes 3-0 with an abstention. Okay, um, let's move on to item E4. This is an update on our goals for student achievement. Dr. Meyer?
Yes, thank you. Uh, monthly, we come to you with an update on the goals for student achievement, and tonight, we're going to highlight, um, three areas that we've been focusing on as a group. And so, very briefly, in the understanding of time, um, we're going to, I'm plagued with this. I, it's not me, well. I can go on to share that one of the conversations that we had prior to presenting tonight was how the earlier conversations of the evening really went beautifully with what we're going to discuss, that all students are entitled to a, uh, strong education in their community, and that we need to really have high expectations for all of our students. And, and this group that we brought together believes firmly in those principles. And so as, as we've worked forward, um, we have two of the members who are still here who would like to share some of the things that they've done. As, as a brief overview, you can see that, as we've mentioned in the past, we have a far-reaching group that includes teachers, principals, um, um, community members, and others who come for input. We also are following along with the board's overarching goal, which is listed above, which we said earlier fits beautifully with what we're doing, and that's the emphasis on the need to be critical thinkers, apply our knowledge, much like we heard the students have done in their presentations today, and to live up to their full academic potential. We also recognize the need to monitor that, which has also been an ongoing discussion. But tonight, I'd like to, um, bring up to the podium just briefly, so you can hear, a couple of members from the task force. We had one who did have to go home to prepare lessons for tomorrow. But I would like to invite Lori LaPointe, and she's going to just discuss briefly how we've been working on reaching full academic potential. Thank you, Lori.
Hello, my name is Lori LaPointe. I work, um, for the Parent Outreach and Engagement Department, and I'm also the secondary support person for the parent academic liaisons. Um, our group, um, is working for, on the GSA II, the Section 2.1 goal about students will set high expectations and work to attain them. And in our discussions, we've done a lot of research, there's a lot of information out there. Um, as, um, Dr., as Nellie Meyer, um, mentioned, we have also, our, what we're doing is directly correlated to the discussion earlier about setting high expectations and the understanding that all students can achieve and deserve a rigorous content, and that it's not just the students' responsibility, but us as district staff, as community, as parents, we all have to work together so that we can produce these types of students. And so, things that we're considering when it comes to our, um, indicators and our reasonable interpretation of that goal are things such as motivation, a growth mindset. We want our students to see the possibilities, we don't want them to be limited. Um, also rewarding effort and investment. It's more than just that letter grade, it's what it represents, and being willing to go above and beyond. And so these are some issues that we've been discussing, and in the interest of time, I'm gonna stop it there.
And, and I'd like to say that, um, the reasonable interpretations for background include, um, following our interpretation of the board's directive. So, um, to, to move on, um, I want to, I want to thank Lori, she's done a fantastic job in encouraging the full ex, the, the high expectations. The second speaker, if I could ask Matt Hayes to please come to the podium. He had been working specifically on one content area, and we're going to use this as a model for the other content areas, and we, um, plan to come back with those indicators in our next update. And if I could ask Matt to please share the process that was used for creating those indicators.
Sure, yeah. Good evening. My name's Matt Hayes, and I'm the Program Manager for Social Studies. And, uh, when we began this process last summer, I worked with Debbie Higdon, who's our Program Manager for English Language Arts, and the committee that was forming around the indicators for English Language Arts, and began with that process, and I'm now working, um, with groups around the district on the indicators for social studies. And, uh, our, our work has been heavily informed by, um, discussions around and research around critical thinking, how do we develop critical thinking within our students, and then, how do we measure that? And so we've been looking at a wide variety of areas. Uh, we've taken a look at what college professors say students need in order to be successful in, at a university, and have kind of backwards mapped from there. Um, we've shared some of the thought, some of our thoughts with college professors, and we've been, um, looking at a text called College Knowledge, um, which maps skills around not only English Language Arts and Social Studies, but all the content areas that we cover in our, our schools. So we started with that, and then we've, we've brought this work to teachers, talked to them to get their input. Community members have well, has well have given their input on this. In social studies recently, I worked with a group of teachers over at Hoover High School, where they've been doing a lot of work around, um, okay, so we, we know what the content is that we want our students to, to be able to master, but how do we get them to think about it critically? And so that, the work they've been doing has been informing our work as well. And then I've, I've been working with other teachers and other community members around the district, and, um, we'll be kind of presenting those to the board in February. Um, but again, the idea is to get as many voices as possible, looking not only at the content knowledge, but also the critical thinking, so that we can apply that and, and make it real for our students, and make it relevant for our students, so...
And just to share that, uh, we've been using the National Core Standards that were recently released as the base, and they're scheduled to be implemented fully in 2013. So the goal of the Curriculum Department is to get ahead of the curve, and, and as we're analyzing these core standards, the feedback has been very strong that they, um, look at information more deeply, that they really go for those higher-order thinking skills. So, thank you, thank you, Matt.
Can I just ask Matt before you go? So, um, I know that the, the, the Common Core Standards are getting more aligned to where, um, your committee, you know, is, is, is trying to, is trying to get. How is your, is, is, is the task force, um, having discussions right now about how to deal with the existing CSTs? And, um, I've heard particularly within the social studies that that's a problem, you know, uh...
There's a lot of content to, to master in, in any given year.
Yeah.
And particularly if we're looking at the, um, if we're looking at the CSTs at the eighth grade, it's a cumulative exam, goes sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then they take the test in eighth grade. And, uh, so there's, there's a lot of discussion amongst teachers, not only within our district, but around the state, in terms of, how do we make sure that we're, uh, we're exposing our students to all of the, the content there, but also getting them to dive deeply into it and think about it critically? And, um, our state offers some guidance, there's what they call the historic, History and Social Science Analysis Skills, and so we, we've done some work around there, and Gary Nash out at UCLA has done a lot of work around, um, critical thinking. Sam Weinberg at, at Stanford University has done a lot around historical thinking. And so we've been having a lot of discussions around how, how do we get our students to that level, and at the same time, expose and, and master the content that we're, we're dealing with? And it, there's no easy solution.
Yeah.
It's, it's quite complex, and it's something we'll be struggling with for, for years. But that's what's been exciting about this process, is we've been able to get teachers from different communities, get community members, and, and discuss these and share ideas, and kind of go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
And we appreciate the recognition that currently the standards are a inch deep and a mile wide.
Yeah.
And that our social studies teachers in particular have shared with the board, particularly those from Kearney High School, who are incorporating project-based learning.
Yeah.
So that is the future, and we see hope with the Core Standards, and the discussion has been around that.
Right.
So, so as we move forward, the, the person who, um, was going to speak to the vehicle, just briefly, we have had many conversations about how professional learning communities within our campuses will be the vehicle to bring the teachers together in this way to have these conversations, and to monitor their students more closely, as is one of our directives. And we will have examples of that as we look to the board workshop of where we're seeing that successfully happening, and how we can encourage that to grow. So to walk us through some of our, um, our work to date, as we mentioned, um, we formed the workshop, the work group, and it seems like a lot longer, but it, it was in the spring of 2010, and that we are now, um, we've interpreted the indicators, which was, um, quite a, quite an interesting task, and now we're bringing our, our updates to the group. We've also had these updates monthly, as we've discussed, because we want to keep it in the forefront. It's critical to what we're doing, and it's the overarching umbrella for our work with A through G, and our work with our math, our math initiatives, and our other initiatives that support students. And then, and as we did, we brought our English Language indicators to the board, and we, we are working on other groups currently, that include social studies and mathematics and other, and other groups that will bring forward their interpretations. And so as we have before you, our next steps will include, um, a board workshop that is currently scheduled, um, to, to provide an in-depth overview, because we realize we now have a new Board of Education, and we want to have a forum where we can have give and take and questions, and, and explain, and, and, and really listen to, to direction as well. And then, in, on February 8th, we currently have planned the, um, the next meeting where we will go through the high expectations indicators that Lori is, is leading, and then the social studies indicators that Matt Hayes is leading. So, um, we look forward to the continued progress, and we're, we're using, um, every opportunity we can to include more people in the process.
Good. Any comments or questions for members? Yeah, great job, as usual. Thank you, thank you. Okay, good. Um, let's move on to our board consent agenda. So, uh, can we get, uh...
I can move motion for F1, F, um, I don't know if you have names for F2, for F2, 3, 4, I mean, the whole thing?
Well, I'd say 1, 3, and 4, because we have to discuss names.
Well, I'd say 1, 3, and 4, because we have to discuss names for 2.
Well, I'd, 3 and 4, I'd like to continue to our workshop, because we were discussing some of those issues. Excuse me. We were discussing some of those issues, and I don't think they've been resolved. Plus, I'd like to discuss some of the bylaws that I think maybe we don't follow, and also others which I think are kind of silly. And also, so I'd like to continue those back to 5, F3 and 4.
Okay, so let's start with a motion for F1.
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Motion in a second. We can agree on that.
Okay.
Okay, 4, and F2?
Scott, you're abstaining from this because you weren't here.
Just feel like it.
Okay, now, why don't we take a motion to continue items F3 and F4?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
But I'm going to vote for that one.
Yeah, there you go. All right, now it's item F2. Do we have names?
Yes. Well, I mean, I'll like propose. The appointment of members of the Boards on Finance Committee, the two terms that are up are mine.
Awarded in Finance.
And Dan McAllister. And Dan McAllister is, has been serving well and is willing to continue to serve, so I suggest we reappoint him to the board. And in my place, I would propose that we place Scott Barnett on the Audit and Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, there's vote.
I will vote, but I won't abstain. I won't abstain, but as part of the motion, since we are looking at reevaluating a lot of functions in the district, I think one thing would be if we can ask the superintendent to work with the Audit Committee to form a working group to review the roles and responsibilities, scopes, duties, et cetera, and the reporting relationship of this committee with the Audit Staff, et cetera, so we can review those issues as part of it. And if that would be included, acceptable as part of the motion, if you got that.
Yes.
I wrote it down for you.
We have that all down, and we all agree.
All right, we all agree. Now, vote, Barnett.
Okay, yes. You can vote for him if you want.
Okay, good. Now, on to item G1. So, this is the appointment of representatives to the Calton High School Boards Association.
I wouldn't move that we appoint, are you already a member, a delegate?
I'm already.
So, Mr. Beiser, since he's, he needs to pay penance for, or be rewarded, I should say, for resting. And do we need to do anybody else?
You, except 2 seats open. You or John, or somebody?
Well, I think our president would probably be the best.
I've already served.
No, our president.
You serve again.
So, Jackson will continue.
Okay, I move that we appoint Mr. Beiser and our fearless leader, President Barrera, to serve as, on open positions.
I can support that, and you'll have to divide his time and decide what he can attend or not.
Yeah, we will.
Hey, Mr. Barnett, you can vote in your motion.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Okay. Okay, let's move on to item H1, our HR and Finance Monthly Updates.
Do you have your money?
Go ahead.
All right, good evening again. In the interest of time, I'll go through this fairly quickly. All right, we're going to jump right into it. These are the November financial updates. We're going to start with cash flow, and obviously, this is our ability to pay our bills. We would report at this point that we are on track. Obviously, this is predicated on a balanced budget. You'll note the spikes in December and April, and that's where we receive the bulk of our property tax revenues. By the end of the year, we'll be down to about $13.7 million in the general fund, which is typical. The challenge that I would just bring to our attention is, again, the deferrals that the state are placing on us. We looked, the last quarter of this year, we'll probably be facing about $70 million worth of deferrals. So, $70 million that we should have realized in this year, we'll receive in July of next year. So, we take that into account. Also, the funding for Title I, which was on the agenda earlier, has changed, and this year, they're paying us on a reimbursement schedule, as opposed to in previous years where they paid us upfront for those funds. These numbers have not changed much since last year, or last month. We're still looking at about 15% remaining in the total general fund, 13% in the unrestricted, and 19% in the restricted. So, we prefer to have more in the unrestricted than the restricted, but I think the schools are just now beginning to move some of their allocations from the unrestricted to the restricting, having just received their final allocations last month. This is just a snapshot of the general fund expenditures by major object code, so certificated salaries, classified salaries, et cetera. This is another look at what's remaining in the general fund, unrestricted at the end of November. Again, you can see that most of what we have in, remaining is reserves, and the others, the other balances are mainly in services and other supplies, materials and supplies, and classified salaries. This is the restricted side, and again, we have some salaries to move into, the restricted certificated salaries, so that will reduce that piece of the pie that's left. This is a comparison to last year in terms of what we're spending in the general fund. So, you can see, this is the total general fund. We're at about a 33% spending level as compared to 32.6 this time last year.
It's interesting, on this one, the green 25, the 25.0 is higher than 25.3, but okay. It's every, it's consistent that we're, it's spending a little bit more than what was budgeted, slightly.
That's correct.
Correct, okay.
That's, it's compared to last year.
We're just comparing year over year, correct.
Do you think last year is compared to?
This is general fund spending, so this is not a budget versus actual term.
No, this is just year over year.
But it's an actual last year versus actual this year.
It's a comparison to what was budgeted last year versus what we spent last year to what was budgeted this year. How much of the budget have we spent to this, at this time through the year, in each of the years?
What portion of the budget was spent at that date?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, this is just a breakdown of that same number on the unrestricted side. So, you can see we're spending at a slower rate in the unrestricted resource pot, as opposed to the restricted, where we're spending at a slightly accelerated rate compared to last year, which is what we would want. We'd want to spend our restricted dollars first. And these are the other funds. Not much to report that's new or interesting here. When we come back next month in January, we'll break out a few of these funds and actually go into detail a little bit further. We were sort of challenged with time here as we were closing the books and trying to get this report repaired, reported, or I'm sorry, prepared for tonight. And these are the rest of the other funds. Again, we'll break out a couple of these for next, the next meeting. And then, this is a slide you saw last month. So, this is just some other programs, some resources, and where we are with respect to either encumbering it or expanding it at this point. So, you can see that, just to highlight Title I again, we've expanded or encumbered about 76% of the money of our resources. At the other end of the spectrum, we've encumbered or expanded about 28% of Title II. So, we will continue looking at those and looking into those and reporting back on those at our next meeting as well. And what's on our current watch list? Again, our positions in the holding departments, this continues to decrease. I think when we, a few months ago, it was as high as $8 million. We're down to $4 million. We have the job study analysis that was on the consent agenda this evening that was approved, that had not been budgeted for, so that's about a million and a half dollar impact. The overformula teachers that we rolled out in the last couple of months, that's about 44 FTE, or about $3.7 million of impact. AB 3632, which we mentioned in our last meeting, and again, we continue to refine those estimates, somewhere between $4 and $6 million. Transportation, we'll come back with a little bit more analysis for next meeting. And again, finalizing the vacancies and some areas of opportunity we're realizing, some savings with respect to the positions that are not filled but are in the budget. Should I be happy to answer? Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Barnett? In the interest of time, and because I have quite a number, but I'd rather, I'd like to see if we can, is it possible to, when you come back, to break, next month, to break these expenses down by cost center, or at least department, versus, budget versus actual, and like to break out expense versus encumbrance as well, so we can see how much is actually.
So, would a division level would be okay?
Sure. Sure. Spanish, yes. Miss Shackelford, did you want to comment?
There's over 600 departments, but we can do a group view, which is a summary of departments within a division, so that you can see better detail within the division without having to look at 600 departments.
Famous last words.
We would. Not Scott.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, thank you. Okay, can we get a motion to approve our item H2?
So moved.
Second.
Right away.
Okay, and now, item H4. So, this is our OE7, Financial Administration Superintendent.
Well, that's Mr. Little, come back up.
Come right back up.
Tonight, we're asking the board to approve OE7s, which are the Fiscal Monitoring, Controls, and Processes Operational Expectations. I'll just go through these again very briefly. We feel that we are compliant with the OE7s with two noted exceptions. The OE7, I'll just start at the beginning here with OE7, which really looks at fiscal controls on the balanced budget, positive audits, and interims. We feel that we were compliant, as noted. OE71 has to deal with the timely payment of employees and vendors. This is obviously focusing on paying people on time and accurately. We feel that we are mostly compliant with these indicators, three indicators that are noted. We continue to need to work on Indicator 2, which is trying to meet the objective of 95% of our invoices being paid within terms. So, we have some challenges just given the number, the volume of the invoices that are coming in, and some of the front-loaded expectations.
A question, Mr. Little. We know we're compliant when the payroll error rate is 1.2% or less. 1.2% error on payroll, I don't know what audit standards are, but that sounds like a lot of money, you know, out of our huge budget. If we were to say that 1.2% error is okay, sounds like a lot to me.
I think the error rate is, consists of underpayment and overpayment. So, it's a matter of, for every 100 checks that we cut, 1% of them about are in error. They're either being paid a little too slowly, or not being paid on time, or being overpaid. So, I think last year at this time, we were about a 1.5%. And I spoke with the director of payroll this afternoon, and she indicated the best practices and standards in the industry is an error rate of 1% or less. So, we continue to improve. More improvement is obviously necessary, but we've improved since last year, and we continue to try to look at ways to improving that error rate.
So, the dollar loss with these minor errors up or down could potentially be a wash?
I'd have to look into that more, more in detail to give you sort of a delta with the dollar loss. But I think it's more about the timing. So, you know, an employee submits a time card. There's hours that are, that they're due to be paid for, and for whatever reason, they're not paid within that time period. So, the check is generated, you know, the next pay period.
Okay, because I see, okay, the category is paid when due.
Correct. Yeah, this is more about time than amount.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
OE72 is about ensuring high-quality and reasonably priced purchases. Again, we feel that we are mostly compliant, and we do a good job around those. We have a little work to do on implementing some quality assurance strategies and creating a survey, as indicated in the notes. 7.3 is about a competitive bidding process, so following state code with respect to going out for bid for those services and supplies that exceed the threshold. So, we have a good purchase order processing control. We have a good bidding processing control, and staff feels that we are compliant with respect to 7.3.
Are we able to include in this report how our percentages are with our DBEs and our minority vendors?
We can certainly get you that information.
Yes.
We didn't include it in here, but we can break that out for you.
Okay. So, what I hear you saying, because it's not here, is that we are meeting and exceeding those goals now?
Meeting and exceeding?
Those goals. Okay, all right.
This is compared to the objectives, the indicators as noted, correct? Right.
Yes. I mean, there was a time when we weren't. I mean, we publicized 3%, and we didn't have 3%. I think we're at 19% now, and, you know, the table of veterans, but the other areas, I don't know what goals we had set for them. And I think we should have those goals in front of us, and where we are in order to make sure that we're saying we're actually meeting them.
Okay, we'll break those out for you and bring them back next time.
Thank you.
With respect to 7.4, ensuring a successful external audit, we heard a presentation this evening with respect to our 2009, 2010 audit and the unqualitative opinions. So, we met all deadlines and were compliant there, obviously. OE75, accounts receivable collecting, collectibles. Again, we have processes in place that meet the indicators as noted, and we feel we are compliant with that one as well.
One question on that. As far as the compliance, one of the difficult decisions we made was charging for transportation, and I don't believe that we've collected all the funds. A large number of parents have paid what they owed, and some have not, which doesn't exactly make it fair. And it says make all reasonable efforts to collect any funds due to the district from any source, so.
Okay, we will have to look into that. I don't know much about collecting from the parents.
Yeah, what we're doing now is we're preparing a report to give to the board at the first meeting in January to update you with what we've done, our methodologies and processes for collecting the funds we have not yet received. We have not moved on to our more assertive manners of collecting until we have informed the board on what the plan is and get your authorization, your approval.
So, what are the steps that have been taken? How much have the people been contacted?
We've contacted, we've had about 5,000 people, we've had about 2,000 paid. 5,000 have requested one type of waiver or another. Of those, we think there's about 1,900 who should pay. So, the number of people that we have yet to contact would be 1,900. We sent them out a second letter about a month ago, encouraging them to pay. We have not gone beyond that to the next step, which is calling them or sending them a letter saying, if you don't pay, your student won't be able to ride the bus, because we felt that was a step that we didn't want to take without the board being aware of that and board authorization to do that.
Okay, but they have been contacted twice.
So, they have been contacted, well, originally way back in April, and then two more times, specifically this fiscal year. And first week in, first meeting in January, we'll have that.
It seems like this is part of the regular monitoring of this section that we'd want to include, looking at the parents who are paying for transportation.
Is it possible, when the transportation, that report comes back, that you can enlighten us of how you determine the cost recovery for charging and what the methodology was? Thanks.
OE76 has to do with maintaining accurate records, compliant with GAAP. Again, the audit is a check on that and a monitoring of those processes. Of course, the Finance Division does monthly analysis with respect to balance sheets and income statements. So, we feel that we are compliant with 7.6. 7.7 is adequate and meaningful fiscal reports to the board. Again, we're doing our monthly reports, our interims, our unaudited actuals, and we're on track to obviously bring forward the second interim in our budget in June. So, we're compliant with 7.7. 7.8 is about the budget implementation. 7.8 is about the budget implementation, monitoring, and controls. Again, so these are, you know, commitment authority levels, making sure that there's tools being used to monitor the site budgets and the departmental budgets. We feel that we are compliant with those. 7.9, mitigating deficit spending. This would be at the fund level, obviously, at the resource level, as well as the program level. So again, we're monitoring our cash on a monthly basis. We're working with the commitment controls and improving on those. We're monitoring revenues on a monthly basis and continue to have monthly meetings with departmental managers and resource managers to make sure that we're not expending more than we have on the revenue side. 7.10, obviously, this one deals with borrowing, and any borrowing be approved by the Board of Trustees. So far this year, we've done the trans and, of course, the geo-bonds, both of which have been brought before the board, so we're compliant with 7.10. 7.11, ensuring minimal reserves. The minimum reserve levels are maintained. Again, we're not spending into our reserves, certainly without alerting the board and getting approval from the board. Bringing balanced budgets and the reductions that we're looking at obviously ensure that we maintain those minimal reserves. So we feel we're compliant with respect to 7.11. 7.12 is inter-fund borrowing. Again, we bring these resolutions to you annually with respect to inter-fund borrowings. As they're needed, we'll bring forward those budget transfers as well. 7.13 has to do with, again, purchases and making sure that single purchases do not exceed the legal limit. Again, we have done audits, we have checks in place, we looked at purchases that were made, and none of them have exceeded the legal limit, and we found no evidence of split purchases. Obviously, we're working very closely with all staff to make sure those do not occur. 7.14, we're meeting deadlines for all financial reporting. Again, the, making sure that we provide the reports to the board for ample opportunity to review, make edits as necessary. We note some examples on those. We've met all the timelines with respect to the county. We feel that we've given the board hopefully ample time to review and make changes. And finally, 7.15 are the internal controls to manage our fiscal processes, making sure those are GAAP compliant. And again, that's a check that our external audit does with respect to meeting those objectives.
Great, so we've got a staff recommendation? Yep. With the noted exceptions, yeah.
Second?
Any further discussion? Now please vote. All right, thank you, Mr. Little.
President Barrera?
Yes.
Excuse me for, this does complete the work plan for the year of the operational expectations. We have one carryover, but that is to begin the new calendar year, the new cycle. My only point in this is, we come back in January, we probably need to look at the next work plan, or at least have that consultation with all the members as to how to proceed.
The timing of each work.
Yeah, and the GSA one is the global one.
Yeah.
We could discuss that at our first workshop in January, would be a good time.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, let's move on to item H5. This is a first reading about the role of the ICOC in the process for appointing members. Ms. Donovan?
Good evening, Board President Barrera, Board Members, Superintendent Koba. This is an action item, as you noted, and we have two recommended action items, I'm sorry, this is an information item, and we have two recommended actions, which we'll be coming back to you on the 11th of January. The first is to approve a resolution adopting a document which you have before you entitled Duties and Authorized Activities of the Proposition S Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. The second is to approve a process for selection and appointment or reappointment of ICOC members. The background to this is that the ICOC was formed shortly after passage of Prop S, and the ICOC took their first seats in March of 2009. Having passed through almost to the end of the first two-year term, we have eight of the 11 ICOC members whose seats are up for either appointment or reappointment. And with that in mind, we were asked to review the process that has gone on for the past two years, to identify what worked, what didn't, and where we thought there could be some recommendations for improvement. With that, I'd like to say that we, I think it was unanimous that we commend the volunteers on the ICOC, both for their dedication and for their generous donation of their time. They worked very hard over the past two years on the committee, and for that, we commend them. But I think with anything, as you go through the first two years of a process, there's always a few things that you can look at and think of improvements, which generated the two items before you. The first one, really, the resolution adopting the duties is really, it's a restatement. The duties are a restatement of what is already designated under the Education Code as the duties and responsibilities of the ICOC. It's intended to provide clarification and a single document by the board in support of what's provided by code, but it's not intended in any way to change the otherwise statutory duties and responsibilities of the ICOC. The second item, the process for selection and appointment, includes a recommendation that eight of the ICOC members be selected based on soliciting nominations from several listed professional organizations. And the purpose in that is that we felt that the process would benefit from the addition of some people with greater technical expertise in the areas of construction and finance and engineering. I want to clarify that this is in no way intended to override what are the statutory requirements for membership in the ICOC. The idea would be that several of the members would have to have dual qualification, either, for example, of being a parent and also an architect. But we thought that this additional technical, I'm sorry, expertise would add some greater depth to the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Any comments or questions? Ms. Jackson?
And I, we have a note here from the ICOC saying it should come back to the entire ICOC for discussion, so I guess we're going to have a meeting to discuss this, but it's coming back to the board.
We met with the ICOC, with the Executive Subcommittee last week, and they voted to approve sending that letter requesting that the item be referred to the entire ICOC for consideration.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we know that we're going to have that meeting. I have concerns about this. Okay, the concerns that I have, what the process, and I think the topic of the current process should be included, especially for the new board members that are here, so they understand how we seated the current ICOC members.
Okay.
And how we did that, if I remember correctly, is that each board member appointed two people, one being in a designated area and one being at large. And I think that if the ICOC, or the staff recommending now that we need certain expertise, I think that then the board member selection of the people should be based upon that. I have strong concerns when we're responsible for this committee, and somehow, this is just one board member speaking, is taking the authority from us and giving it back to the staff. And I think that the voters, when we said we're going to have an ICOC committee appointed by the board, that's what it meant. And I think that the staff recommendation should be to us is, these are the criteria of people, the people that we want you to consider. I don't mind doing that, but I do have a problem when you say that certain entities now would be the ones to decide who is going to be on that committee. That I do have a problem with. So I need to get a better clarification from that, because what, maybe I'm reading this the wrong way, but the way I read it is that the board, the board members now, all we do is we rediffile whatever the staff does. Is that not true?
No. The idea would be that names would be solicited from among those organizations, and then the recommended people would apply and go through the application process, and the board as a whole would approve all of the members of the ICOC.
Okay, but the difference is this, and this is where I guess I have, I think that, yes, those people should apply, but the board members need to review those. I know some people have a problem, they say it's the staff's job. I think it's our, my responsibility to review those people and try to make sure that whoever I'm appointing is representative of a larger group of people. What happens, and this is, again, this one board member, I feel that sometimes we end up with the same group of people.
Right.
Okay? If it's anyone different, it causes friction. And it's friction because this is who we're supposed to have on this committee, and how you have this other person down the committee, we, you know, that person doesn't fit in. And as mentioned kind of earlier in one way, democracy is not very pretty, okay? People want it to be nice and simple, but it's not. And when you bring together a group of people, you want to have people that have different opinions and people who are going to push the envelope a little bit. So I would get concerned that these people are screened out, and then at the end, the board is saying, here's a list of people that we think you should have, and I want you to approve them. I cannot support that type of entity.
Can I move that we continue this to February and recommend that the ICOC in their January meeting review and give us whatever feedback they want by that meeting?
I guess the question is--
That's a motion. That we continue it to February.
We've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
The motion is what?
To continue this item to February and in January ask the ICOC to, they've requested input, let them give input, and then send it back to us and take action in February.
Is there a second for Mr. Barrera's motion?
For deciding that, I guess, is what about the timing of this in terms of people serving now and terms being expired and--
The terms will expire, and they will need to either be reseated or replaced by March, by the March meeting. I'm not sure exactly of the date, but moving it to February does cut the time period rather quickly.
When is the ICOC supposed to meet in January? Does anybody know?
Mid, in the middle of the month.
So could we could do it the second meeting in January?
The terms are up February 15th. For eight of the 11, the terms are up February 15th.
So they continue to serve until, yeah, so it doesn't really matter.
But we could, we could discuss it at the second meeting in January if they've already met.
I can second the motion.
Okay, so the--
Motion was February, February, to bring it back in February, and then have the ICOC give whatever review and input they want prior to then. So they have to do it in their January meeting, basically.
So why not the second board meeting in January, then? Why February?
Because we don't know when they meet.
Yeah, they meet the middle, they would meet before the second.
I have a feeling we're going to have a busy meeting, second meeting in January or something. I was just suggesting, give it a month. I don't think it really matters, but that's the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, and we've got a second for that. Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Passon. Okay, and then item H6, this is a, this is a first reading.
Even though we table, you hate one speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Chris Cate wanted to speak on this item. Not here.
Do you want to speak?
Okay. Okay, item H6, so this is a public hearing on our categorical transfers, Superintendent?
Mr. Little?
This is the flexibility requirement. This is supposed to happen between 8:00 and 8:05 PM.
Yeah. Running a little late. This is as a result of SBX34, the categorical flexibility approved by the state, as you know, in 2008, 2009, all of, they swept up over 40 categorical programs and moved them from the restricted side of the House to the unrestricted side. And so part of, in adopting the budget, is approving the use of those unrestricted funds now to either use, to either fund general purpose programs, or in our case, to continue funding some of the programs that those funds were funding prior to the flexibility. So that's what we asked the board to approve tonight.
Okay, I move, is this, this is a first reading?
I thought this was a first reading.
This is a first reading, okay, very good.
Yeah. So I guess, are there any, are there any questions for Mr. Little?
Well, I just think that we, the funds, if at all possible, should be returned to the areas they were swept up from. And the only reason I would say that is because there was so much confusion, and we were sort of freezing the funds last year. Everybody didn't go out and do their due diligence for spending it, and then it became, there was just a lot of confusion around it. And people felt really penalized because they felt like in the beginning, we were told not to spend, and now we're told to spend, and they wanted to do, to spend the correct way. So I would certainly be in support of giving the money back to whatever, whatever department it came from. Okay? Just one of your choices that you said, right?
My understanding is that, now, these funds are, were unrestricted, and they were not necessarily allocated to sites on a pro rata basis. So I think you're referring to the ending balances that we had in Title I and some other categorical funds.
I'm looking at Attachment A, where it says the actual programs.
Correct. So these funds support those programs, and at the end of the day, no matter, if there's money left over that we haven't spent on those programs, that money goes back into the ending balance. So they were never appropriated, appropriated to the sites per se, but rather supported those programs that supported all sites.
Okay, but I think your comment, and maybe I'm just, you know, it's getting kind of late, getting kind of hazy here, but I thought the understanding was, when it just comes back to us for action, you're asking us, what do we want to do with this? Do we want to take these funds and put them all in a general fund, or do we want to give them, allocate them to something? And what I am saying is just, this one board member--
I understand.
--would recommend that we reallocate them to the areas that they came from, versus putting them in a general.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
I respectfully disagree with Ms. Jackson. I think we need to, every categorical fund that we've got flexibility, we need to allocate to the general fund and then make determinations from there. That would be my input.
So you got two. You got two. Big one to go.
That's right, yeah. Okay, so, but we'll take action on that next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We've got three speakers, Edith Smith, Ethel Larkins, and Letizia Mungia. Edith wants to speak on items I-29 and 31, but I think she's not here. And it looks like Ethel and Letizia want to speak on item I-46.
Ethel Larkins, Chapter President, OSS 724, address is on file. Good evening, it's getting late. My concern with item I-46 is, I'm speaking against it because I would really, please, please ask you guys not to support that agenda item, because this agenda item continues to undermine and attack the work of classified workers and employees in the district. We ask that you mandate staff to go back and figure out a better, cheaper, and more effective way to provide office supplies to our district. We're talking about a $5 million item here. It's a $5 million contract, okay? The other question is, I want to know, is why is Art Hamby being supported in outsourcing our classified work? By whom and at whose direction? Okay? Because we've been down this road before about our warehouse and our supplies. We've worked real well before, and here we coming back revisiting this. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Letizia Mungia. I'm a CSCA Labor Rep with the OSS unit, and I'm here on behalf of the workers that we represent out of the warehouse and distribution center. Most of you, I know most of our new members have not had a chance to be there, and I want to invite you to come out and meet our folks, because they're happy to welcome you and see the, as soon as you drive up on the hill, you'll notice that there's a physical inequity. And I want to challenge you to come out and see it. Somebody you just heard about, there was many, many, many hundreds of dollars invested in the modules that were put in two years ago. One of people across the street who've been working for you for 20, 25, and 30 years have no heaters, thanks to Drew and Jean's involvement, just got heaters installed as of last Friday. We've got people who are working in under 40-degree heat while people-- We got people who are working in under forty-degree heat while people across the parking lot have new modules in high-end restrooms. We talk about equity, it's not present in distribution up on the hill. We talk about who's being given, uh, authority to do certain things that are actually hurting our classified workers, and I would tell you that I concur with President Larkins. I have to tell you that this agenda item severely confir, concerns me. Uh, I sent you all an email this morning after I realized that it was there, and I continue to be amazed at the lack of, uh, due diligence that your leadership staff goes down every time, right before Christmas, right before our workers are getting ready to go. Most of our workers, their weekends, their week ends this coming Friday, and most people actually check out, right? Because of the holidays. And I have to tell you that our people are so vigilant over the work that we do for this district, that they are on the concern about their work. We know we can do it cheaper. You promised me that you'd create an ad hoc committee with Scott Burnett and some of the other board members to really look at waste and fraud in our district, and we stand ready to do the work, but you know what? When we see actions like this, that come forward with no notice to CSCA, and you know what? I don't want somebody to send me an email or a phone call to try to make me not be at a board meeting at nine thirty-eight, six at night. I will be here till midnight if I have to, when an injustice is being done to our workers. It doesn't matter what time it is, you need to understand. The mere callousness of putting a five million dollar contract that would gut our warehouse is unacceptable, and I have to tell you, it's in violation of the ed code. Two years ago, I asked you, do an apples and apples and orange for an orange comparison. No one has dared done it. It's violation of ed code forty-five, one oh three point one. Show me the dollars that it's cheaper to go to Office Depot out of Texas than it is to bring our hundred top products back into our warehouse. It is so upsetting to me to understand that there's a purposeful intent to undermine our classified workers and their families. I know that that's not the board that we've worked so hard to have you understand what our folks do, but before my time's up, I want to give recognition, because it's always good to give recognition. And I want to thank, uh, under the leadership of Mr. Koba, Superintendent, Stover, Nellie Meyer, and Sid Salazar, out in the, uh, out here in the auditorium. A couple weeks ago, we had an issue out of our childcare development centers, and all of you got emails when everybody was happily going to cut the turkey on Thanksgiving. But I have to tell you, the lives of our childcare attendants were completely improved by the leadership that Nellie, her office, and her staff, and Mr. Stover, uh, demonstrated when we had people being worked illegally and did the right thing for the right reason. The right thing for the right reason. And I want to compare that action that the district took, no interest whatsoever except to doing what's legal and what's right for our workers, and we have people who were being worked illegally for years, who are now part of this district family, who should have been from day one. So Nellie, Phil, I want to let you know, and Mr. Koba, your leadership impacts the lives of our families, and I don't want you to forget that. So when I see officer strategic sourcing contracts, it bothers me, because it should really say outsourcing, because this is what we do in front of you every year. What is really the intent of this office? I want you, Mr. Barnett, to drive up to the hill and see the inequity in the physical premises. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Is there another speaker?
Yeah, well, why, and there's not another speaker. Why don't we do it this way?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, when I first saw this, I was, as you know, you have the subcommittee that's been appointed and...
What we usually do is, um, if you want to pull an item...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You want to pull I forty-six?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and do any other board members want to pull any?
I want to pull item, uh, twenty-two and forty-four and forty-six, we're starting to pull.
Twenty-two and forty-four and forty-six, and any others?
Thirty-nine.
And thirty-nine, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So move.
And a second? Second? All, all in favor? Okay, let's take them in order then. Item twenty-two, Ms. Jackson?
Okay, I can't support, um, well, part of this, some of this I can, but, uh, some of these areas are increase in wages because people have completed the work study, and in a time of economic, um, crisis that we have, and in addition to that, um, the freeze that we have, you know, hiring and that type of thing, I just don't think it's, and there's another hundred or so work studies out there to be done. And so I, I don't want to approve raising people's salaries because a work study is done, when we have a lot of work studies that need to be done, that haven't been done yet, and if they all came in, we couldn't afford to do them all, so I can't support this.
Um, do we have a motion to approve then item I twenty-two? All right, I'll, I'll move, yeah.
Do you actually need I twenty-three?
Classification, I guess.
Uh...
Just two classifications.
Okay, let me just make sure I get this right. Yes, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, I twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay, it was on the wrong thing, okay, very good.
Okay, I, I will move approval of item I twenty-three.
I will second.
Okay. Um, any further discussion?
Just one question, why, and is this being done now as opposed to part of the budget, or does this mean this will be included in part of next year's budget?
Will this be included in part of next year's budget?
Is that the intent, and...
Yes, Sandra Pueso's here, she can, she can speak to it, but this is part of the, the board requested of us several months ago to do an, uh, thorough evaluation of classifications, both individually and, and as a whole, and we committed to have all of that done by March, and this is a...
Okay, so it's, it's not, it's, it will be effective as of next fiscal year?
No.
No.
Some of these would be effective for this school year, and the budget would be paid out of this year. Now, in terms of other classification studies, we, every year, we do have the opportunity for employees to submit a request to have their jobs reviewed. That group will be coming forward to you by March. However, um, in terms of the group that you see before you, these have been pending for quite some time, and basically, what we have been able to do is verify that the folks have been doing the work, so we are obligated to make sure that we are compensating them appropriately. So the effective date would be pretty much from the start of when they started doing the work, and be able to be compensated this school year. Any new classification studies that we do will also have a future date, but there are still some pending, because they were newly received of this October.
Mr. Little, maybe you could talk about budget impact.
So with, with respect to the budget, uh, we're looking at the fiscal impact, some of these go back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, so the fiscal impact for this current year is the estimated one point five million that we have noted on the, on the recommendation. Moving forward, once they're implemented, excuse me, this year, uh, the, the cost for out years would be considerably less. A, a large portion of this is, is retroactive pay.
Now, this is, uh, these are, so, like, the one point five million, is that budgeted for the...
We did not budget this for this current year.
President Barr, if I could, uh, this is the conundrum we have.
Yeah.
Uh, over several years, we've been pretty erratic about processing reclassifications in a timely process, and where we are today is, HR and the finance have been trying to catch up. This is on the watch list that Ron briefed earlier, when he, under that line called job analysis. This is one and a half million dollars that goes against the bottom line. The conundrum is this, these people have been doing the work, they have earned the, the funding at a time when we have fiscal tensions, problems, so we just have to recognize that, and we will have to figure out how to cover this if the board concurs with the proposal.
One way of looking at it is basically a recognition of an error, that we have not been paying them correctly during this time, as opposed to we're approving paying somebody more, giving a raise or something.
Okay, we've got a motion and second, any further discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, that motion fails? Um, okay, so then...
I would recommend we bring this back as part of the budget process for next year.
So our, our recommendation, sorry, say that...
That we bring this back as part of our review of, of next year's budget.
So that we would take all of the reclassification that we know about and add that to the, or put that into the...
Into the, the mix, including ones that are still out there that they're coming forward with, and let's look at them, everything together, and then...
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense, is that Superintendent understood?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, um, thirty...
And this is not a reflection in any way upon the individuals or their department or the management in by not doing that, it's just...
Yep.
Want to make it clear.
Okay, item I thirty-nine, this is, I think, Mr. Barnett?
Oh, um... Which one was the, sorry, was the, oh, yeah, um, can we continue this? Uh, I'd like to, especially since we're looking at re, possibly reconfiguring the Oversight Committee and budget issues, I'd like to just put it off till February as well. It's an expenditure of, what, eighty-seven thousand dollars, and, unless it's, so I think they can get by with that, so my recommendation is we continue this to at least February.
Same meeting where we discuss the ICOC, yeah?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, item I forty-four?
Um, the list of schools that are affected by this would be extremely important, um, and, and I think that, Vapp is not here, but they, I tend to ask this question very frequently, and I didn't ask it this time, I forgot about it, but I think that we need to know what schools are gonna be affected, and to make sure that, that, that is spread across the district fairly and equitably, because they are doing, uh, research, and so that's the comment that I have for this.
Dr. Mar, do you have a list?
I do not have that list in front of me, I can get that information for you.
Okay.
Is there any, uh, time-sensitive nature of this?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so why don't we continue this, um, to, why don't we do the first meeting in January and come back with a list?
And what you need is the list to...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We should...
Do we have to take action on that? Continue the... Cheryl, do we have to, do we have to take an, an action to continue the item?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then item I forty-six?
I, I was gonna recommend that, that the board say that, we were gonna look at the whole procurement process, including the, the, the staff and, and others and interested members of the public as part of our review process, so we could s, put that at the top of the list, especially if, and, uh, so I'd recommend that we continue this...
Until you've done that work.
Yeah, I mean, we'll put it at the top of the list, and then, I understand the contract's expiring, and I guess the only question is, what do you do if the contract expires?
Can we get it, yeah?
Yeah, the, the contract, this is an annual contract that we, we bring to you each year. It, it is significantly amended from what it was a year ago, based on the fact that we did bring paper back into the warehouse, we were previously buying paper from Office Depot, that has been brought back into the warehouse. These are the regular, um, ones and twos and nines and tens of, of office supplies that are delivered directly, um, to the schools the next day. Without this being passed right now, we would have no way to, to, um, procure those supplies come, come January second, unless we're able to negotiate, uh, with them, uh, some kind of an extension. Art, Art might be able to speak to that, uh, with more detail, but this is an ongoing, um, agreement that we have each year, and we, we have worked with the committee, remember earlier this year, we did have a committee, we did, as a result of that, move the paper from this contract into, um, the warehouse itself.
Okay, well, it sounds, yeah, Mr. Barnett, yeah, go ahead.
So I would just recommend, for now, we continue it till, um, the second meeting in February, and then we'll, and then in the interim, if Mr. Hamby or staff needs to come back with a monthly contract or some other procurement in the interim, then we'll, we'll deal with that at the, uh, first meeting in January, because it expires January, uh, second, I guess, so, so, um, there are other ways to buy pencils than, than, if necessary, for...
We're gonna, we would need some direction to know whether you can give us the direction to extend the existing contract for a month, otherwise, in the month of January, we would have no way...
I would include in the motion that we can extend it.
We would have no way to buy.
I would include in the motion to extend this month to month if, if, if that can work out.
All right, and I could second that motion.
Okay.
And I would also say that we don't want to go back to the habit of giving things to the board the last day before it's due. If this contract was due to expire in January, then they shouldn't be coming to us the last meeting in December.
You, you previously approved, what, what happened here? We, we did that, we, we attempted, we brought it to you in October, I believe.
Okay.
And you approved the contract. After you approved the contract, the, the vendor that was chosen, the consortium that was, that was chosen, uh, indicated that they could not meet their obligations.
Okay.
They could not sell to us at the price.
Okay.
So af, after telling us they would, they told us they couldn't, so then we had to bring it back again, because we just discovered that late last month.
I feel better now.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, and also clarify, this is not meant in any way to prejudge, uh, the quality of either the contract or Mr. Hamby or the, the allegations, the comments of the classified employees tonight, I just, let's go through the process, and then we may come back with the same recommendation, or we may come back with something different.
So I can support the motion with the caveat that if the staff, um, discovers that we're gonna be out of luck and unable to purchase supplies for January, um, you've gotta make us aware of that, uh, and then we've gotta figure out a way to, to take some action as a board.
We'll just use Stover's credit card for, until our first meeting in January. Yeah, okay.
Phil is in half line.
Oh, okay.
Who used yours today, Amy?
I didn't mean the district credit card, I meant his personal one, I didn't mean, yeah, just a...
Yeah, Mr. Hamby?
If I, if I could, just for a minute, um, give you kind of an update on this, um, we have been working for many months to put contracts in place that really minimize our spend. Uh, the board has previously approved a contract, um, for office supplies from a different company, uh, we're still implementing that, we don't have that up and operational yet. Um, in the meantime, um, on the seventh of December, this particular contract was put in place by the cooperative. It mirrors exactly what we now have in our purchases from Office Depot under the current contract, but it also brought to the table an additional five percent rebate. Now, we get a six percent rebate now because of electronic purchasing and because of the volume of office supplies that we purchase, so that six percent rebate, we plow that back into reducing, further reducing the cost of items purchased. Office Depot came with this contract for six months and added a five percent double rebate on there, which now gives us eleven percent. So we take that money, and that, that eleven percent represents about three hundred thousand dollars. We use that to further reduce the cost of frequently purchased items down, so we've used this over the course of the years to stabilize the cost of products for schools, uh, and now we have the opportunity, uh, under this contract, to further reduce that for the six months that that double rebate is on, so it's extremely advantageous to us. Uh, we have a, a, again, a, an item that was approved by the board earlier, um, with Office Depot, but only for classroom supplies, very restricted contract, but again, a contract we worked on at a national level to further reduce the cost of classroom supplies. Um, that contract only has about thirty-eight hundred items on it, this one has over twenty thousand items on it. Uh, the contract before you tonight also has on there, uh, customized, um, products for us, composition books, uh, that are used by our schools, have been used by years, for years, and Office Depot provides them to us under that contract. So there's many benefits why we brought this to you. Uh, it was really exciting to kind of be able to, to put it together, um, at a national level with, uh, the cooperative that, that was mentioned, in order to further reduce our costs, so that's, that's why we have this item at this late date on the agenda here, it's in the best interests of our schools.
I have a question, we have these contracts, as I understand, probably up to five million, right? We, we go along spending on it. If we have a contract with them, are we able to just stop purchasing, purchasing from them and go to somebody else at any point in time?
Yes, that is entirely correct. So you example...
We could, we could utilize this contract during the first month or two, and then go elsewhere.
That's, that's correct.
So what's the downside of approving it at this point, then? If we find, because, we, this is just opening an agreement to make these purchases, and we just stop making the purchases, and we find somewhere else cheaper or better way to do it?
How long is the contract? Or was it six, how long was the contract?
But the contract doesn't say that we can't go buy the things elsewhere, it's for a year.
This is a non-exclusivity contract, uh, we can use it to our benefit. Uh, in fact, what we're trying to do is to put choice in place so that we can... In fact, what we're trying to do is to put choice in place so that we can buy from multiple sources at the lowest possible cost.
So, we could choose, after we spend $50,000, to buy nothing else from them because we found a better deal elsewhere?
Yes, and that's what we're doing in other areas. We mentioned copier paper that was restored at a warehouse. We did our bid, which the board awarded at the last board meeting for paper. We just found a 20 cent reduction per case price on a tractor-trailer load price from another contract, and we're going to bring that to you in December or in January.
So, not knowing much with these contracts, but if we were to say we want a month-to-month or one month or two, all they would be doing was saying, we're giving you this, what they're calling, you're calling a special price. Instead of giving it to for a year, we're just going to give it to you for a month or two. Why can't we just take it for the year and stop using it when we don't want it anymore?
Well, we have this, I mean, we have this 5% additional rebate that's in place from January to June under this particular contract here. And that provides us really the opportunity to further reduce costs during that period of time if we have our purchasing volume, which, based on last year, our purchasing volume for six months was about $2.9 million. The threshold for the 5% additional rebate is 1.7 million. I would expect us to be able to meet that and then be able to take advantage of that reduced cost. So, it's a very active contract as far as the implementation of it. By taking that rebate that we get, instead of getting it, as I, you might say, as a check to the district, we use that to reduce the cost to our schools at the time they purchase things. So, when they go online in our electronic commerce system and purchase, then they are benefiting from that reduced cost at that time. So, we're saving them money in their budgets.
I don't know, I can't, there's a motion on this floor. I mean, if that doesn't pass, what I would suggest is going with the contract and deciding that we would, within a month or two months period, decide whether or not we've found a better deal elsewhere. But this is the...
Yeah.
I can't amend the motion.
Do you want to restate the motion, Scott, that you made, or do you want to?
Does the clerk have a motion?
I don't know, actually, that we need a motion, because I think, you're saying just continue.
Yeah, to continue till February.
Okay, so I'm making a motion, okay.
Well, there was a motion, second, that was made, to continue it to the second meeting in February. And then, in that, and we will attempt to come back with a review prior to that point. And, you know, if you approve this contract tonight, then the staff, in theory, could, throughout the district, spend up to $5 million, because that's what it allows.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess, this is quite an amending of the motion, but just basically that we would, for the second week of February, make a decision about what, that we would extend it now and make a decision the second week of February, not whether or not to continue with it.
Exactly.
Okay, so let's do it this way, because I think that's a different motion. Let's take, Mr. Barnett's motion is to continue this item until February, and in the meantime...
Second meeting, yeah.
Give direction to staff to negotiate a temporary agreement. Is there a second, again, do you?
I do second.
Okay, so let's vote on that motion. Okay, so that motion fails now.
Okay, so my motion is that we approve the contract at this point, but by the second week of February, we come back, the staff comes back, or we have a review also with perhaps the committee. By that time, to recommend, to make a decision the second week of February, whether or not we want to continue with the contract.
And you mean second meeting of February, I assume, not second week? I assumed...
Second meeting, if that's what you said, yeah, second meeting in February, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think this is my concern.
Can we just get, see if we have a second, really? I'll second that motion. Yeah, sorry.
All right. The way I understand this, and Mr. Hamby, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong. This agreement, the way it reads here to us says that if we approve this, this is from January 2nd, 2011, to February 28, 2012. Now, I think what I hear you saying is that even though we have this agreement, we don't have to spend all that $5 million there. We can, at some point in time, start spending it someplace else. But I have a concern that we would approve something that has a limit, a ceiling of $5 million, and then, we'll turn around, maybe in February, if we find something better, and approve something else that has a different limit. So, all of a sudden, the limit that we have out here is not just $5 million. It's $5 million for Office Depot, for this one here, and it's maybe $4 million for the next one. And so, I have a concern with that, because even though you may say, don't spend on it, when you read this right here, it talks about the fact that it's already plugged into our system, our PeopleSoft system, then most people are going to continue to use it, even though we may say we have something else. And since I don't have the actual agreement in front of me, I would have to, is there a clause that says that we can cancel within 30-day notice of either party in that agreement? If there's such a clause in there, then I can support this motion. If there's no such clause, then I do have a problem with having multiple contracts, because what I did notice is that I received a list of open contracts that we have now, and it went from 869 to 904. And we were trying to get the amount of contracts going down, not up, so I have concerns.
Yeah, we've probably done a better job in putting all of the contracts consolidated in one place. Those kind of contract lists that you just received, and it consists of three types of contracts. We have revenue contracts, money coming into the district that are listed. We have no-cost contracts, such as universities and colleges for services that they provide to us.
They were included in the prior reports to the board, because...
They have been in there. We also have the interagency agreements between school districts in support of the transfer of students between districts. That hasn't been in that report before.
Oh, it hasn't, okay.
The board has approved that, so we added those in, and there's 42 there in the number for each school district in the San Diego County. And then, we also have what we call the expense contracts or expenditure contracts like these that would also be in that report. So, that report does run between 900 and 1,000 active-term contracts at any one time.
And what about the answer to Ms. Jackson's question?
With respect to the question, I'm not positive right now. Generally, any contract does have a termination clause. We can, if the board were to decide to shut that contract off, not use it anymore, we can shut it off in the system so nobody would have access to it. Realize that the way this contract works is, schools will submit requisitions against budgeted funds to make the purchases. To give you an example, there were 55 orders placed last Friday. They were delivered on Monday. There were 40 orders placed Monday, and they were delivered today. Just today, there were 45 orders for office and classroom supplies that were placed, and by this time tomorrow, all of those orders will have been delivered to our schools and departments. So, it's on a demand-type thing. There's no commitment, there's no obligation, there's no expenditure of funds that's guaranteed by the spending authorization which you approve.
But from what he's saying, it seems to me that if we have the power, if we have multiple contracts and we have the power to turn one off in our system, that's one safeguard we have.
My feeling is, is I don't have a problem with Home Office Depot, knowing that we are looking at other options, and other vendors see that as well. And I think overall that, you know, we're a big vendor or a big customer, and I think we will be able to work that out. So, that's why I recommend the motion. But there's another motion on the floor, which...
We've got a motion and a second to approve this item and have staff come back to us in the second meeting in February with a recommendation of whether we shut this contract off and go to an alternative, or whether we, you know, keep going on the contract. So, that's the motion. So, without any further discussion, please vote on that motion. Okay, that motion fails as well.
So much for having four...
I'm a German.
Well, wait a second, I mean...
Unless you want to make another motion, but we're essentially continuing it if there's no action, which is kind of what I wanted anyway.
The problem is, the problem, yeah, it is. The problem is, what happens in January when schools can't get their supplies?
The first week, all of a sudden, they're...
My sense is these guys will figure it out.
They're very creative.
We do need this to purchase supplies in January, so it is a timely nature.
Yeah, I think that we can certainly shut this off with a push of the button, because it is all online through our PeopleSoft system. So, there is no problem with us come February with shutting it down, should we come up with a better alternative.
My sense is Office Depot will be happy to work with us, will work with us in the interim.
I just, I think it's a little bit silly to ask the staff...
Go ahead.
All right, let's remake the motion.
Okay. I repeat the prior motion.
Yeah. Second the prior motion, let's vote on that again. Okay, that motion passes.
Anything else? Is that it?
That's it, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Okay.